We'll call the meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for Wednesday, April 28, 2021. Roll call of attendance. Chair Dave Hatfield present, Amy Wall.
Here.
Darrell.
Here.
Jim McBane. Jim?
He's on mute.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lupe.
Here.
Mike Afeely.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Thank you, all in attendance, I will proceed to the legal notice, Amy if you please.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to it to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 13017158592, meeting ID 87822914026, passcode 276731. Please use, please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One continued hearings, 221-21-51, 21-52, CCF Quanapower Property Company LLC, application for a special permit and site plan approval under Article 6, Section 190-32 and 190-45 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow multifamily mid-rise and garden apartment buildings containing 485 residential units mixed and combined with a restaurant use. Application for a special permit under Article 6, Section 190-31, I'm sorry, 32 dot one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing reductions and or alterations to diminish dimensional controls which are required under Section 190-32D and or Table 2, dimensional table of dimensional regulations. The requested reductions and or alterations include and are not limited to requirements relating to height, application for a special permit under Article 4, Section 190-23 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow restaurant use. The property is shown as map 01 lot parcels AM1 of the assessors map and is located at 200 through 400 Quanapower Parkway. 21-53, Michael Momeno, application for a special permit under Article 9, Section 190-50 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing the raising of an existing detached garage and construction of a new detached garage. The property is shown as map 15 lot parcels 100 of the assessors map and is located at 218 Vernon Street. 21-54, 21-55, 21-56, and 21-57, Albion Street Reborn LLC, application for dimensional determination and or finding with the respect to a continuation and extension of a nonconforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-50B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to change the use of the second and third floors of the commercial to residential use, application for a variance under Article 6, 190-32B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a reduction in the square footage allowed per apartment. Application for a variance under Article 6, Section 190-32B1 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow mixed use on a lot that does not meet the minimum square footage requirements. Application for a special permit under Article 7, Section 190-36C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw requesting a reduction in the requirements of off-street parking for the proposed apartment. The property is shown as map 12 lot parcels 134A of the assessors map and is located at 13 through 15 Albion Street. 21-58, Mass Mini Motto Inc., application for special permit under Article 4, Section 190-23 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to incorporate fast food in conjunction with its existing convenience store use. The property is shown as map 17 lot parcels 179 of the assessors map and is located at 10 through 12 Vernon Street. 21-59, Elizabeth A Lombardo, application for a variance under Article 10, Section 190-66 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw seeking to modify related to the premise granted by the board on October 5th, 2020 to allow a modification to the existing family dwelling by changing the roof line and or adding a dormer. The property is shown as map 32 lot parcel 63A of the assessors map and is located at 249 Nahat Street. 21-60, 21-61, Keith J Bernato and Nicole J Bernato, application for a special permit under Article 6, Section 190-32G2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to convert a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. Application for a variance under Article 10, Section 190-66 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw seeking a variance from the requirements of Section 190-32G2 related to the conversion of a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. The property is shown as map 17 lot parcels 18 of the assessors map and is located at 17 Park Street. 21-62, Christopher M Freney and Marilisa Freney, application for determination and or finding with respect to a continuation of an extension of nonconforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-50 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct in addition onto an existing dwelling. The property is shown as map 34 lot parcels A15 of the assessors map and is located at 16 James Street, Board of Appeals. Oh, that was a long one.
Thank you. Yes. As everyone can see, we have another busy agenda this evening. Please have a drink of water.
Right.
Catch your breath. Few quick reminders again, if anyone hasn't been attending Zoom meetings from the town before. The chat feature has been disabled, so all discussion will take place in the meeting room itself. Ask everyone to please share the video and audio in the meeting room as we would do during the regular public hearings in the conference room unless there are technical limitations. The applicant will present their information and testimony. We ask all applicants on the agenda this evening to please be prepared to have electronic copies of their plans to share in the meeting room. Everyone is enabled to share when it's their turn to do so. We'll discuss the application with the petitioners and then after that we'll read any correspondence and then welcome any public testimony. When we do so, I'll ask you to raise your hand and you can do so in the Zoom room and I will call on you in order that I see them. An address for the record. Any votes will be taken via a roll call vote as we did for the attendance. And again, when it is the time to speak, I would ask that you just please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting room. And with that, we will get started. So the first hearing on our agenda was a continued hearing. A letter from their attorney to request a continuance. So if anyone's here for that, we'll take that up front. Dated April 28, 2021 from Brian McGrail regarding SGD Management Group LLC at 97 to 99 Water Street in Wakefield, case numbers 21-43 and 24. That's 43 and 44, yes, 43 and 44, okay. Asking us to continue the hearing to our May 12 meeting, still work in the process of working on revisions requested by the board at our last hearing.
I move that we continue this to the May 12 hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yes.
I have, oh yes, okay, so that's your name. So if anyone is here for the Water Street application, we'll next hear that on May 12. Now, before we launch into the new hearings, we wanted to take up a matter that we expect to be rather quick, more of a follow-up to previous hearings at 27 and 37 Water Street. We have attorney Michael McCarthy here with us this evening to give us some updates from our last, or our previous hearing, I think a couple of meetings ago. Where we finalized and updated some, some plans, there were a few punch list items still to go on the property and Mike can share us some updates and next steps so that we can move this one along. So Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, you're correct, on February 10th, we were before the board, we went over the the Oz built site plan which was approved. The board voted to allow for a $15,000 surety to be posted to ensure that landscaping, parking lot striping and sidewalk construction would be completed to the satisfaction of the board and in compliance with the plans. Mr. Chairman, you, I and town council had some discussions about the best way to accomplish that and ultimately it was decided it would be best if the work just got completed since it was, it was apparent that that could be done, or we thought it could be done relatively quickly. Along those lines, it's my client's position that the landscaping and the striping have been completed. The irrigation system had been installed, needed some repairs, it has been repaired. We did some, sent some photos and showing you the working, the working system and the plants are per the plan. That leaves the sidewalks. So we had a, a number of discussions with the town engineer through, you know, works under the DPW and they had some suggestions all along the way about particulars relating to the sidewalk. So we, we engaged the town engineer, went over some revised, some detailed plans, sidewalk plans with him, met on site. When I say we, I mean the project engineer, my client and I, along with the town engineer and his staff. We identified several difficulties, long story short, there are some issues with respect to the little, the very small reveal on the curb out in front of Sunny Nodos and some of those curbs may have to be lifted. There were also some issues with respect to a small section of sidewalk with meeting the, the requirements of the ADA in terms of grading front to back or back to front from street to building. The net-net is that the town engineer suggested, and we have agreed, that we should let the town do the work. The town wants to do the work from, it would connect the rail trail in front of our, I'll call it our site, past Sunny Nodos and up to the work, the work limit that the town's going to engage in on some main street work. It would allow us to solve a number of problems, including the street grading, the lifting of the curb in compliance with ADA. All that work would be controlled by the town and paid for by my client. The town engineer has come up with the, the cost of work, it's over $24,000 and my client has agreed to pay the town that amount of money to allow the town to do the work. I think the town engineer considers it a better solution, frankly, although it's more expensive, so too does my client. It eliminates the prospect of any disagreement over the nature, the nature of the scope of the work. It also solves some issues. We were going to bring the sidewalk in front of 27, 37 into ADA compliance right now, the sidewalk would have to slope toward the building and the water would spill toward the building, which is obviously not something that we want to have happen. This way, the town controls the scope of the work, the timing of the work, the quality of the work. It ensures ADA compliance, it also ensures that both ends of the sidewalk match up with what the town wants at the rail trail and up toward Main Street. So that's essentially it. My client's prepared to pay the money on Monday to ensure that that work gets done the way the town engineer wants it done. And hopefully, you know, it resolves all the issues with the board as well. It's a different form of surety, I suppose, a much more liquid form and addresses the points. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mike?
Yes.
Does, does a town have any timeframe?
I know, Jim, I, I don't know, I, I don't know.
I mean, I, I see these funds once in a while go and it just goes year after year and nothing gets done. And I'm, I'm wondering whether I would think we want to see something done. I understand that switching control here basically is into somebody else's timeframe and I'm fine personally with basically the town taking over the responsibility because as we know, it's, it's coordinating the whole, that whole edge basically for quite a distance. But I'm really concerned that this fund just sits in a pot somewhere and the work doesn't get done for a long time.
Well, I understand that. It's been, you know, the position of the board all along that we should defer to the DPW, whatever the DPW wanted, we should be doing with respect to the sidewalks. This is what they want. It's more expensive for my client. We too would rather see the work done sooner rather than later because it benefits my client. But, you know, it's, it's within, it's within the control of the town to, to deal with town issues and town sidewalk, it's town property that we're talking about.
Can, can we get some sort of commitment from them as to some sort of timeframe, even if it's, you know, even if it's sort of like between here and there somewhere?
We can certainly try. It might be better coming from the board than from I or my client, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to make the request.
Dave, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine doing that. Again, I, I still think, I think we were waiting for some of these items to be done to just do a final, final walkthrough, so I'd like to still do that, just make sure board members are comfortable, either Jim or Chip, I think one of you was going to go out and just make sure that.
If we can get, if we can get this, this piece of it sort of nailed down, which sounds like we're pretty close to it, I'm perfectly willing to go over there and, and finish up the last pieces basically and just close it.
Okay.
Right.
The other one will be paperwork, I just, I gotta correspond with the town engineer. You know, they sent an email, I was copied, I'd like to see it maybe in a letter form and maybe put some constructs, you know, some, some boundaries around it, as you said. So I'm willing to do that on behalf of the board, just to get it in writing and then with, with the client, you know, submitting the check, so we know that that is taking place and then we just. And then we can write a letter to the building inspector and say, given this, you know, the current status and this agreement, you know, then they've satisfied our conditions. The building inspector, again, don't know if there's any other outstanding points, but it, he, he would, he would know that we, they've met our conditions at that point. So Chip, did you have anything else or?
Yeah, I, I mean, I know Jim's trying to get the town to commit to a timeframe, I don't think you're ever going to get that. They may give a rough timeframe like this year, next year type thing. I, I, I'm a bit frustrated that it's come to that because it would be nicer to have the work done as, as Mr. McCarthy has suggested that his client would also like to do because it will benefit his properties as well. So I guess we can reach out, but I don't think that the decision to allow this to happen or not should be based on us getting a timeframe from the town that we're satisfactory with because that puts Michael and his, and his owner in, in a precarious position. So if the engineering department is, is willing to do this, I think we should go along with it.
Okay, they're also moving a curb cut, right, to move the driveway. So it's not just redoing the curb or regrading the street, it's moving because the parking, the way that lane comes out. So it's, it's, it's to everyone's benefit that that gets done in a reasonable timeframe. So we can ask and I'll pursue. But anyone else?
The town controls the timing in any event.
Well, we can express to them that we want this project to be, everyone wants this project to be done. So even though if they're willing to take it over, we'd still like to have it a priority and not something that, as, as Jim said, you know, just sits for two years. Because it's tied to some other work and then it's, you know, like rail trail and it's not quite ready for that and so it just sits. So at least they could do in front of this property and tie it in with whatever the larger plan is when that, when that time arrives, but okay. Anyone else? Okay. So as I said, and Mike, as you stated, we had previously agreed to do this, it would just, and we, from offline discussions agreed to just like get the work done. So I don't know if we need any further motions because we've already sort of agreed, I think we just, if we can just get an onsite check on those other aspects and I worked the, the the curving part with the town engineer, you know, we'll, we'll try to put this to bed.
Yeah, absolutely. My clients will be available from Monday on, so whatever works for Chip and Jim, we'll make work on our end.
Okay. All right, we can collaborate offline and set up a time. I, I did get the pictures, but just to walk the site quickly and.
Absolutely.
Check, check the.
Mike, I'm, I'm going to want to see the sprinklers run in all the beds because we saw some pictures, but we didn't see pictures in every bed. So I, I do want them to be prepared to run through the zones.
Okay.
Just so you know. Pictures don't count. Help, but they don't finalize it.
Trust me, verify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right. All right, if there's nothing else, thanks, Mike, for attending, I appreciate it.
Thank you all, okay.
And we'll be in touch.
Appreciate, thank you. All right. Good luck tonight.
Yeah, thank you. All right, with that, we are going to proceed into our new hearings for the evening, the first one being 21-50, 51 and 52 CCF Quanapower Property Company LLC at 200 to 400 Quanapower Parkway. Great, if I may, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Brian. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, public for the record, attorney Brian McGrail on behalf of CCF Quanapower Property Company LLC, the applicant for special permits for multifamily mid-rise and garden apartment buildings containing 485 residential units mixed and combined with a resident use, I'm sorry, with a restaurant use on the subject property. I'm going to ask Ally, could you bring up the PowerPoint? Please, thank you. Great, that's fine, Ally, appreciate it. I'd like to give kind of a brief overview of an agenda that we have scheduled that we'd like to accomplish with the board tonight, Mr. Chair. First, I'm going to make an introduction of the project team. I'd like to give the board some site, site history, talk about a zoning overview, existing conditions on the site. Then we have objectives that will be presented by Jay Dougherty and Matt D'Amico of Cabot Cabin in Forbes. Then we have some landscaping details and design details that Ian Ramey will go over, he's from Copley Wolf Design Group. And then we have architecture, Ally Adams from Cube Feet, Cube Three, will make a presentation on that and then I will do a conclusion and then obviously we're happy to answer any questions that the board might have. I think as you can surmise from that agenda, our goal tonight is to give what I, what I would say is a good broad overview of the project, knowing that we will get into the details of all aspects of the project at subsequent meetings of the board. In a project of this nature, it's, it's my experience that this is how the board normally likes to proceed, so we're prepared to do that.
Appreciate that, Brian, just real quick, if I can interject, have you gone through these slides, like how many slides? We just, as you heard, we have a busy agenda, this is obviously a big project, but do, do you have a sense of how long we think it'll take?
I'd say you're probably looking at 45 minutes.
Okay, let's see if we can do that because I think there's going to be some initial public input as well and we'd just like to sort of time box it if we can, maybe an hour or so, because we know this is an introduction.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, we're going to move, you know, I think it's important for us to set the table for the board and, and, and that's our goal and for the public and everybody to have a full understanding of what we're proposing at this time.
Understood.
So that, that's our goal. I'd like to reference all members of our presentation team, not all of who are here or will present tonight, but it is likely that they will participate as the meetings on this project progress before your board. So obviously myself representing the applicant, my co-counsel on this is Peter Tam from Goldson and Stores, Peter is on the Zoom tonight. The development team is Cabot Cabin in Forbes, Jay Dougherty, Matt D'Amico and John Sullivan on their behalf. A development partner of Cabot Cabin in Forbes is Eastern Real Estate and Don Briggs, Managing Director of Eastern is on and could be involved as we move forward. Landscaping is, has been designed by Copley Wolf Design Group. Ian Ramey will present throughout the project and the hearings on that aspect. As I've mentioned, Cube Three is the architects and Ally Adams is our lead architect. Site Civil is Alan and Major Nick Delacova, Nick Delacava is here and will present and also I anticipate that Tim Williams might be involved also. We actually have a wetland scientist on this project. Goddard Consulting, Scott Goddard. And finally, our transportation is Vanessa and Associate Scott Thornton, who I think the board is familiar with, Scott has been involved in other projects before the board. So Ally, if you could go to the next slide, I appreciate that. Great, thank you. Slide, this slide really, I want to familiarize the board with the subject property. Sometimes it will be referred to as a site throughout our presentation. The property is known and numbered as 200-400 Quanapower Parkway. It's shown as lot AM1 on map one of the Wakefield assessors map. This site was developed in approximately 1957 as office space with over 600 surface parking spaces. It was a longtime home to American Mutual Insurance Company. They were there for a number of years until they vacated and then it served as offices for other corporate entities over the years. For the most part, it remained unchanged until approximately 2010, when the existing, when the existing office space was modified to include a data center with the associated massive outdoor generator farm that I think folks are familiar with, until that operator vacated the site some time ago and since then it has pretty much gone underutilized. So that familiarizes you with the location, which I'm sure you already are aware of. And Ally, if you could please go to the next slide. Great, this is a kind of a snapshot of our zoning map. The site is extremely large, it actually consists of approximately 24 acres of land and it is located primarily in the limited business zoning district with a very small portion in the business district out near the Lowell Street end of the site. As far as zoning is concerned, the proposed uses are allowed in the applicable zoning district pursuant to special permits and site plan approval from your board, which we've applied for and we're seeking. With the site significant acreage, the site could qualify for up to 870 residential units pursuant to Section 19032 of our zoning bylaw if your board were inclined to give a special permit. But that's a density calculation that works out for the, for the site. You may recall that we appeared before your board on May 13, 2020 regarding this site for a pre-application meeting with my client's initial concept plan that included approximately 600 residential units with six-story buildings. That was about a year ago. We walked away from that meeting recognizing that we had a lot of work to do to address the concerns and/or issues raised by your board that evening and also the concerns of stakeholders such as the Friends of Lake Quanapower. So for approximately the next year, my client went to work to meet and collaborate with stakeholders such as the Friends of Lake Quanapower in deriving in point design standards for this project that will be a guide to get us into the plan development that has been presented and that you will see some of tonight. These design standards not only resulted in limiting the height and number of stories of the buildings, because now we have two, three-story buildings and one four-story building. But the design standard has also resulted in, in, in improved quality of wa, lake water, lake water quality, resulted in public access to more open space and pathways in the creation and protection of significant conservation areas in perpetuity. The value and input in participation of the Friends of Lake Quanapower in the design standard process as the plans were developed cannot be understated and is very much appreciated and well done. We believe that as the hearings on this project progress, it will become extremely evident that the project will have a tremendous beneficial environmental impact to the lake, its watershed and its total water quality. I also want to point out that as, as well as your board, the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over this project, so we're in the process of filing with them and we will be going through hearings concurrently with them as we proceed through your board. Ally, if you could go to the next slide. Thank you. I also want to point out that this site was considered as part of the Housing Production Plan that was approved by the Department of Housing Security back in 2015. That was done by Epic Abacus Architects on behalf of the town, Abacus Architects and Planners in conjunction with our town planner, Paul Reviss at the time. And as you can see, that plan contemplated this site, this area in essence for this type of, of development. This is a cut sheet from that report and it states an entire mixed-use lakeside development is an exciting possibility with jobs, restaurants and both affordable and market rate housing. Much of this district is removed from the lakeside neighborhood and could accommodate mid-rise or even low-rise, I'm sorry, even low-high-rise building, Wakefield Housing Production Plan. I want to acknowledge that that plan technically has expired, you know, less than, about a year ago, I think just over a year, but it certainly is still referenced on our town website and I think it is also a value and a guide and does have relevance on this project. website, and I think it is also a value and a guide and does have relevance on this project. If we could go to the next slide, Allie? Did you go to the next slide? I'm having a little... Okay, just popped up, thank you. Just again, to familiarize the board with the site and a little bit more detail, kind of zooming in on it. As you can see, the property abuts one twenty-eight, Route one twenty-eight on its rear side, and obviously, that's the town property in the lake on the other side. It has access from Quanapower Parkway right out to North Avenue, Route one twenty-eight, and then heading towards downtown, and also has access out to Lowell Street, which takes you to the Rotary and out towards Lynnfield. There is, what we've done here to kind of help the board, we've kind of delineated the best we could, the property line, because we wanted to give you an idea of where the public land is, we've kind of labeled that. There's also a significant open area on the site. We've designated it as woodlands, there's wetlands mixed in there, but there are some uplands when it's been dry for a while, you are able to walk in there. So, that is an area that will be preserved, as you'll see, as we go through the process. You know, I think one thing to stress on this, as we go through it, when you look at these existing conditions, this is a redevelopment. You can see that basically, except for that woodland area, which I referenced, which we are not going to disturb, the site is pretty much maxed out development-wise with impervious area, significant parking spaces, the generator farm, which we've pointed to, the generators are no longer there, they've been removed, but it's still just a flat, impervious space. And the building covers a good part of the lot, but where there's no garage parking on this site, the parking lot takes up a pretty good area, as you can see. Allie? Really just kind of want to point out to some of the existing conditions of the site. As I've mentioned, this is a redevelopment site. I think, you know, and I would encourage this to board members, because I've done it recently, spend some time out there, walk the site. You'll notice a lot of the infrastructure, some of which is shared with the town, is in a state of disrepair. It does need to be redeveloped, and there's a lot of pavement work that, you know, will obviously be totally removed and redone as part of this project. Go ahead, Allie, to the next. As I've mentioned, I think as we go through the hearing process, it's going to be quite evident of the environmental impact, the positive environmental impact that this project will have on the lake. The American Mutual site originally in nineteen fifty-seven, when they developed properties then, they did not have the same stormwater management standards and requirements that are in place today, so there is virtually no water treatment on that site. You can see from these photos in the top left, that's like an old drainage swale that water just flows off of the parking lot into the wetlands, which is in, obviously, the watershed of the lake. And then, you know, you can see the old generator farm at the bottom, which has now been vacated, just total impervious. This should be, you see all the broken curving, this should be the poster child, if you will, for the board when you require granite curbing and not allow by Tuminus, because this is like the picture-perfect. I think Mr. Todd Bell might put this in his save file to pull it up, because this is evidence of what happens. And then, you know, because the site is being, is really underutilized, if you walk through there, you're going to see certain things happening there that, you know, I don't think are good for the site. It's, you know, people are kind of doing their own thing up there. You can see they're throwing picnic tables out wherever they want. I noticed that more than one spot right up on the water, they're kind of creating their own sitting areas, it's kind of like people are just doing what they want up there. And I think some more, more of a plan, which we hope to implement for the open area and the public area, would be beneficial, not only to the site and the lake, but to the public as a whole. Next slide. Okay, I think, I think I'm going to hand it over to Jay. Are you, are you ready?
Yes, I'm available, if you can all hear me.
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Brian, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board. My name is Jay Doherty, the CEO of Cabot Cabin in Forbes. Just very quickly, because I'd like to spend your time focused upon the project that we're proposing. CCNF is the oldest development firm in New England, founded in nineteen oh four, and I like to emphasize that we are a greater Boston firm. We're here, you can reach us, you don't have to call Los Angeles, we're accountable to you, and we're available to you at any time. Over the years, we have become increasingly focused, not on just building buildings, but creating places, often at transit, and very often on waterfronts. We've built several projects along the Charles River. We have built along the Mystic, the Malden, the Ipswich rivers. So we're used to dealing in sensitive locations, we're very often dealing in redevelopment. What you see here today is a project called Charles River Landing, and the upper right-hand screen, that is built along the Charles River, and you see the walkway path in the lower right-hand screen that we created along the Charles River. In the middle screen on top is a waterfront park. This is more formal treatment that's sometimes adopted, called the Mystic River Waterfront Park, really part of a chain of waterfronts that's been developed in that area, spanning Mystic River over to Assembly Square. Our most recent project that is now opening is called the Overlook. It's at a former abandoned monastery in Brighton, twelve-acre abandoned monastery, rather large site, a very tall site on a hill, and we inherited two historic properties. One was a monastery, which is in the upper left-hand corner, you can see that's now restored and open, and one was a church, St. Gabriel's Church, very large church, as well as an abandoned Olmsted Park and other features. We've recently been proud to be awarded what's called the Menino Legacy Award. It's done by Preservation Massachusetts, it will be announced May twenty-first, and it really captures what we try and do with our projects. We understand that the sites that we're involved with are really places that need to enrich and engage with the community, and I think what we did, this particular project is in Brighton, it uses the words transformative, catalytic, embracing the community, creating partnerships, and revitalizing. And when we look at Lake Quanapower, and we look at this site, it's an important site. It's the gateway in that area to the town of Wakefield, it's highly visible, and today it is a blighted site. One twenty-eight is dominant. The building is in extraordinary disrepair. There is no infrastructure that really supports the health of the lake. It's really not a fully safe site, it's poorly lit, got a lot of undergrowth. All of those situations we've worked with before, I will tell you that it takes a major effort to be transformative in this situation. You have a variety of issues to deal with, engaging with the community, and it takes a significant investment to reverse and to rebuild in this situation. So what you'll hear us talk about tonight is things we've drawn from the town's own studies, from the town administration, from the Friends of the Lake and others, to set a series of discrete objectives that we hope capture what you think may be the best way to enshrine a place that invites the community, that invites the public, and celebrates the lake. Allie, if you could proceed onto the next slide. What I'm going to do is ask our project manager, Matt D'Amico, and as I said, we've tried to distill what we have heard and what we have taken in to a series of about ten design objectives, and we try and articulate those objectives, and then illustrate what we're trying to do with the project to achieve those design objectives. Go ahead, Matt, would you please?
Thank you, Jay. My name is Matt D'Amico, I'm a project manager at Cabot Cabin in Forbes. I've had the pleasure of working with this project for about the last year now. In that time, had the pleasure of working with the town, as well as its community groups, namely, the Friends of Lake Quanapower, try to develop a plan that is responsive and suitable for this site. And I think our proposal tonight to the board reflects what we've heard from the community, and I'd just like to quickly take you through some of these design objectives that we've heard and what we're adopting into our planning for the site. So first, conservation areas. So as part of our plan here, we are proposing three separate conservation areas totaling just under thirteen acres of land, one being the nine-acre woodland on the eastern edge of the site, two acres of wetland buffer, and over one acre of publicly accessible land, which would be an expansion of public open space currently available at the site. This is critical for our redevelopment. What we're currently preserving are only redeveloping the currently disturbed area and adding an additional thirteen acres of open space. Secondly, a big design objective of ours was environmental and reducing impervious area on the site. So, the site currently today is covered in asphalt, parking spaces, and other impervious surfaces, and has very, very limited stormwater management. Project proposes to remove four hundred eighty-five onsite surface parking spaces and increase impervious area by over one acre. And perhaps most importantly, the project proposes a robust stormwater management system which will greatly reduce runoff into Lake Quanapower and will improve the long-term health of Lake Quanapower. We're also expanding publicly accessible pathways on the site. As part of our project, we're proposing to create an additional lake path on our site. What we heard in working with the town is that there is not a very clear delineation today between public and private space at the front door of two hundred Quanapower. It often feels like the two hundred Quanapower existing building is encompassing the town-owned land, which actually is directly adjacent to the site. So as a way to make a clear delineation between public and private land and make that public land really more usable, we are creating a lake path on our property line, which is going to encompass rain gardens and will be very functional for creating public space that's very usable, and honestly, creating a new open space on Lake Quanapower that otherwise doesn't really exist today. Another thing we heard, which we are looking to incorporate and are proposing today, are public facilities with inside our building for public use. A few of those facilities include a cafe, we're proposing a cafe that walkers of the lake can enjoy, that'll include some outdoor seating. We are also including restrooms as part of that cafe that are going to be available for public use, for people walking the lake, something that the lake currently doesn't have. In communications that we've had with Wakefield Police, we are also, we heard it to be a good idea to include some kind of public safety facility at our site. You know, there is currently a bike patrol of Lake Quanapower currently, but with no outpost to stop at. So, as part of our project, we will be including a public safety room, which will be work as outpost for Wakefield Police. A big concern that we heard early on in the project was about height, and making sure that the massing of this project is reasonable and modest, given its proximity to Lake Quanapower. And we heard that, and what we're proposing today, is we are capping, or at least in our proposal, we are capping the heights of buildings closest to Lake Quanapower at three stories, which is about thirty-two feet. So, you can go to the next slide, Allie. Our second, or third building on the site, Building Three, will only step up to four stories. We are also positioning that building purposely to screen Route one twenty-eight from noise and traffic impacts, which are currently felt throughout all of Lake Quanapower. If you sit on the town commons, you can know, you can hear Route one twenty-eight from there. So, we are purposely designing our project to deaden some of that noise. Our seventh objective here is we will be providing eighty-seven affordable housing units available for mother-in-law households. As you saw earlier in the presentation, you saw that Quanapower Parkway is currently in disrepair. For onsite portions of Lake Quanapower, or sorry, rather, Quanapower Parkway, which is the majority of the Parkway itself, we are proposing to completely rebuild it with granite curving throughout and a modern drainage system to handle a lot of the problems that it currently has. You know, today and date, this Parkway is not really functional, and we are going to put it into a state that they have very nice condition. Ninth objective here is to commit to the long-term improvement of water quality of Lake Quanapower. A lot of what that includes is both onsite and offsite measures, onsite management of our stormwater and our runoff. But on top of that, we are also committing to some offsite projects identified by the Clean Lake Committee as top priority projects, which will, in the long run, improve water quality, the water quality of Lake Quanapower by minimizing runoff in different areas surrounding Lake Quanapower. And our tenth priority is really to design this as a safe site, safe and secure site. So we have a commitment to including twenty-four-seven security services on the site, a gated garage access system, security cameras, video intercom access, and license plate recognition technology, so that we are ensuring we're going above and beyond to make sure that when we are establishing this residential community at the head of the lake, that this is really a responsible program that is not only taking into account the environmental and design issues, but also just human safety issues that face the town. So, thank you.
We got to go to Ian here, Matt?
I think so.
Ian, you're up.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. My name is Ian Ramey, I'm a landscape architect and principal of Copley Wolf Design Group. Very good to be with you this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about the landscape, not in super detail, but just to a level to kind of highlight some of the big moves that we are proposing, and keeping in mind that we're going to dial into a more detailed discussion, obviously, as the process unfolds and we get into some discussions with the cons-con. I thought to start out, just to highlight the idea of how we're improving the site generally, is to start with a little more detailed discussion of the existing conditions. So, the slide that you see in front of you shows the existing condition, and basically, it's forty-one percent of that site area is existing impervious surface. That's a combination of buildings, asphalt, and obviously, the big concrete paths and so forth that are out there. That equates to about four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of dark-colored asphalt, dark-colored roof. That's a heat gain issue, that's a solar gain issue, it's not a great condition. We also noted that there really is no stormwater management currently in place out there. It's a dated system, it's a failing system, there's really no treatment of the surface water as it runs off into the lake, which is a huge problem. So, all in all, it's really not a very environmentally sensitive existing condition. And if you go to the next slide, please. So here's what we're proposing. This is the new plan, and you can see that we are significantly reducing the amount of impervious coverage, we're now down to thirty-six percent, and I think the other part to note here is that, like we said before, there isn't any stormwater management. We are now bringing in a very robust system of stormwater management with many different facets of it. One of the more interesting ones and significant ones are some of the low-impact development strategies that we're proposing, namely, an extensive system of rain gardens. So we're proposing about twenty-six thousand square feet of new rain gardens. These rain gardens are going to be able to capture and treat twenty-two thousand cubic feet of stormwater onsite. These rain gardens are going to be able to basically reduce the runoff and filter out sediments and pollutants by virtue of the plants in those rain gardens that are going to be able to uptake those materials. So it all equates to basically a significant decrease in the amount of untreated water that goes into the lake and therefore improves the lake quality. I'd also like to note that we are proposing nearly two hundred new shade trees, native shade trees, that will contribute to the overall site's resiliency, and then just generally, you know, the site largely consists of pavement and lawn, and the overall overarching approach of the landscape design is to really bring this sort of ecologically restorative approach, where we're replacing those surfaces with biodiverse native plantings, adapted plantings, plantings that can support habitat, plantings that are pollinator-friendly, plantings that really boost up the site's overall resiliency. Next slide, please. And so here's just some quick sketches of... And so here's just some quick sketches of what that, what form those landscape improvements will take. So the upper image is a really quick conceptual sketch that we worked on and shared with the friends of the lake, showing how the rain gardens might work and how that might integrate with the public realm. The thought here is that these rain gardens really are extensive, integrated, diverse, colorful objects that are part of the core of what the landscape is. We want these to be focal elements that people engage with and understand and participate in and have them be really beautiful and functional elements. You can get a sense of some of the planting strategies that we're showing. Okay. So, okay, so here we are with this slide here basically shows the conservation of land. So as Matt had mentioned, we have the nine acres of woodland, the two acres of the wetlands buffer, and then importantly, that one point three acres of new publicly accessible land. That equates about fifty-three percent of the overall site is going to be now conserved land. That one point three acres basically increases that existing parkland by about forty percent. Next slide. And then the final objective from a site and landscape perspective really is to get into the expansion enhancement of the public realm, the public open spaces. So we have the existing lake path, which is beloved and which will remain in place. We're not altering that. As Matt had mentioned, we're introducing a new path. It's in this new newly added open space. That path really becomes sort of the demarcation point between the public and private land. It creates a very welcoming open space and kind of makes the transition from the public park to the private part of the development. The new path intertwines with the landscape elements like the rain gardens and really is a rich public open space element that we think the folks will enjoy. Interior to the site, we have a residential street, a slow street where we have raised crossing tables so that pedestrians feel comfortable walking through there. It'll be a tree-lined street. The sidewalks associated that will connect to an outdoor cafe terrace on the southern side of the building with lake views and then a larger open space plaza at the heart of the site that has a series of public bench seating, smaller areas for gathering and really kind of engages with those first-floor active uses. So we see a really vibrant and kind of active open space element. And then the last thing to point out, with the reconstruction of the Parkway Road in full, we're proposing to introduce traffic calming measures there so that it's not a speedway people want to cut through. It can actually turn into sort of a shared use between bicyclists and vehicles and be something that is actually an amenity to the people using the site. Next slide. And then just some quick vignettes of what this public space feels like. So the upper left is an image of what the residential street will look like. You see the street trees. You see the plantings. You see the activation of those first-floor units out onto the streetscape. The lower left, you show the image of the path sort of nestled into the planting pallet and how that could work. And then you have in the middle some images of public seating nestled within small plaza spaces, the idea of public benches that are integrated into the planting, and then the idea of sort of an enriched public experience through use of specialty materials like salvaged materials. We have some boulders on site we can reuse and then specialty pavers that sort of make a special pedestrian place. And then with that, I'll hand it over to Ally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Ian. I'm Ally Adams. I'm an architect at Cube Three. So we're going to jump into the site plan here, and I think up until this point, we've really discussed the public lake front land and how we plan to utilize it. But I do want to focus on the buildings and the neighborhood road and the other programming elements beyond the lakefront. So each building on the site plays a role to support the public realm. Our front lake-facing buildings, Buildings One and Two, are segmented into really what becomes four garden buildings that gently sculpts the extension of the public land and engage one edge of the new recreational path. Along this edge, we have residential units, and we did that to reduce any excess activity, any excess lighting, but maintain views outward for that sense of community and security. It's important to note that in both of these buildings, there is a covered connection. So that connection goes through the center from the neighborhood road and the sidewalk out to a boardwalk that will take you over our proposed rain gardens and connect to the recreational path. And these connections will be open to the public. There's not going to be any security measures through them. It'll kind of invite the public to flow in as they wish. So moving to the rear building, Building Three, is located, as Matt mentioned in his design objectives, to protect the site and beyond from Route one twenty-eight. And that really helps us create this neighborhood feel on the internal road. You can see in this rendered plan that we have walkout units at the ground floor. So those units will have a small patio or stoop and be able to walk directly out to the sidewalk without having to use an internal corridor. We also have three courtyards in Building Three. They're purposefully placed on the neighborhood road to kind of break up the street wall on one edge and again, to take the mass of the building and push it towards the highway for all of the reasons we've already discussed. It's important to note, too, that we have our wrapped garage structure in Building Three. So that's going to be wrapped on three sides by residential units, and it'll only be visible to Route one twenty-eight and from that portion of the Parkway. And the garage is really crucial for us as a design element to get those surface parking spaces off of the site and into a structure to improve our open green space and impervious calculations. So for the public, as we already mentioned, we have a cafe at the south end of Building One. So that's highlighted in orange, and there will be a large patio associated with that cafe. It will connect to our new proposed path on our property, and there will be public restrooms. In the through-building connection of Building One, we will also have the public safety office that Matt mentioned, which was designed in accordance or planned in accordance with the Wakefield Police. So I do want to get into the metrics here a little bit. So in Building One, we have eighty-seven residential units, and that's dispersed among three floors. So the both three-floor buildings along the lake are coming in at that thirty-two-foot height. Building Two is slightly larger at ninety-four units. And as you can see from the site plan, most of our density is in the back. So Building Three is three hundred and four units, and that's among four floors. And four floors comes out to be forty-five and a half feet. On the surface, we have two hundred and fifteen total surface parking spaces, and that's because we've moved a lot into the garage. So in the garage, we have those five hundred and thirty-two structured parking spaces, which gets us to our one point five-two resident parking ratio, which does meet existing Wakefield zoning code. So in summary, that's four hundred and eighty-five units at that one point five-two parking ratio. Now I just want to do some before and after views on the site. So there's a key plan in the upper left that you can reference. Right now is the existing view as you are on Lake Quanapawat, or are on Quanapawat Parkway entering from north of. So you can see the existing lake path entry on the left here. There's also a curb cut that continues into the front of the site that either turns up for surface parking or is used for existing loading. And then, of course, the Parkway swings around to the left of the screen here. This is what our proposed project would look like from a similar vantage point. So the lakefront path will remain. It's on public land. We don't plan to touch it or alter it in any ways. But we will have our revised path, this path along our building, connecting into it at this edge of the Parkway. And where this edge is meeting is actually where we are eliminating that curb cut that goes into the loading zone. So the Parkway will now only swing around and have a separate entrance to our neighborhood road and then the existing curve around the rear. But just to really flip back and forth and show you now that curb cut is gone, and this has become a significantly greener view. This view also has our cafe in it, so we've put out some umbrella, something that would be reminiscent of an outdoor patio. Next, we're moving into the center of the site a little bit. Right now, we're standing down the curb cut we were just looking at, looking at the existing building. The lake is kind of treated as the rear, so these are not main entry doors. They're service doors. And again, it's mostly asphalt. It's not a decorative facade element. And here, I've shifted a little bit over into the site, but we're looking at all three buildings and where they're intersecting in that central plaza. So in the foreground here, we have Buildings One and Two at three stories. They would have residential units, including balconies and a variety of windows and patterns and materials and textures facing our new proposed path, buffered by those rain gardens and incorporated seating elements that would all be available to the public. And in the rear, you see our four-story building, which is Building Three. In the center, where you see that warm brick, would be our main entry to Building Three, but you can see beyond, that's kind of where that far wall goes against Route one twenty-eight. My last slide here is just to, again, show you a zoomed-in plan of the public cafe, what we're kind of thinking. It wouldn't be a large, loud space that adds a lot of light, but it would be a place for you to stop and get a bottle of water or a cup of coffee and use the public restrooms. And I'll hand the mic back over to Matt D'Amico here to summarize all of our points.
Thanks, Sally. So our ten points, just to reiterate them. Point number one, create conservation areas on this property, twelve point seven acres of conservation space permanently protected. Reduce impervious area on the site. Expand public open space onto our site as well as creating public facilities within our building, such as the cafe and the public restrooms and the public safety office. Lowering building height as it compares to the existing building as well as including lower building heights closer to the lake. Screening Route one twenty-eight, providing affordable housing, rebuilding Quanapawat Parkway, improving drastically the water quality of Lake Quanapawat through stormwater management and offsite improvements. And our tenth priority is comprehensive onsite security. And I just wanted to point everyone here in the direction that we have a website where you can stay advised of details coming up with our project. It's courbanized.com slash project slash Wakefield. I am also personally accessible to talk to anyone about this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, and I'd just like to add one thing that Matt talked about. We'll also just add on to that, that we're, obviously, your board is going to require an operation and maintenance plan, as you always do, for our property and facility and upkeep on landscaping. But we're also looking to have some discussions with expanding that operation and maintenance plan to include the town land that goes beyond us up to the lake, that my client would like to, you know, discuss that with the appropriate officials to make, to make the commitment to help maintain that so that there is no distinction from that public line to where the public can go on our property. And, you know, and I think it would be helpful for the town to have that property managed by, you know, a professional landscape company. Obviously, the Conservation Commission would have to participate and have some say in that, too. But that's something that we would like to get in some discussions about. So this is, this next slide, Mr. Chair, is really just kind of future topics that, you know, we wanted to have a discussion with you I just, at the end of this meeting. So I don't know if we need to go through it now. I don't know if we might be appropriate if we entertain questions from board members or comments, and then we can kind of table this and come back to it when we're completed.
Sounds good, but it looks like the usual list and covers the bases, and yeah, we'd certainly be starting with number one as we always do, so. Okay, yeah, why don't we do, why don't we do that, board members, if you have anything to? Any comments or any questions at this time based on this initial presentation?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Brian. This many units all at once, I understand it's going to take a couple of years to build. But, and you're not going to sell them all at once, but is this going to put a strain on the school system?
Historically, what we, one of the things that we're going to submit, we've actually hired somebody to do an economic benefit impact report that we'll be submitting. So that's a good question, you know, financial impacts of the project on the town, etc. So we've hired an expert to write a report. We'll be submitting that into the board. And then one of the topics, Joe, at the end, was that we were, you know, obviously, that was going to be one of the meeting nights that we would discuss that and have a presentation on that.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Mr. Chair, this is Greg. Yes. A question. So Brian, I noticed you, or maybe it was Matt spoke to it, but in the presentation, I should say, mentioned eighty-seven units and specifically said for moderate income. And our bylaw says low and moderate. Maybe that was just, you know, language used. But what's the plan around those? And I'd like to see some, you know, with a, with a unit or unit count this high, if it goes there, I'm not convinced it will, see some, I don't know, bigger effort than just trying to meet the minimum to the point where we're even rounding down to get to to the eighty-seven and using moderate income. And maybe the moderate wording was an oversight, but.
Yeah, I think whatever the bylaw is, Greg, which we traditionally have done, and I think, you know, that's usually done with the, with the affordable housing consultant. So, you know, we're happy to meet that. Obviously, we have to meet that requirement, and we will. So we're not trying to skirt it, and if it came across that way, it was.
No, no, I mean, quite honestly, the way it's written, you wouldn't be skirting it. It does say low and moderate income. But I want to understand that the, one, if there, obviously, not for a discussion tonight, but when we get to it. But understand, one, if there really is a difference under, what do we use, mass CHD actual, HCD actual definitions? But what those definitions are, what the difference is between low and moderate? And I mean, I would, I would like to see if we do stick with a unit count this high, more of an effort to actually provide. I think one of the things that Wakefield is lacking, and we all know this, is a diverse housing stock. So, yeah, that's my initial comment.
Well, taken. We'll talk, Jay, I think we can talk to our affordable housing consultant on that. Does that make sense?
Yes, certainly.
Yep.
I think in previous, in other projects, sorry, Chip.
No, no, no problem.
No, just real quick to just finish that point, and I think we've had it conditioned in other sites like this that there's a, there's a preference for Wakefield residents, too. So when we get there, and that's typically been when they do the lottery and such. So we'd be looking for that as well. But anyway, Chip, go ahead.
Yeah, Greg mentioned sale. Brian, what's the thought? Isn't this a project that's going to be held by CCNF and its rental?
I'm going to let Jay address that. I think that's correct.
Yes, it's to be held by CCNF and its partners, and it is a rental project.
Okay, so in that sense, all to our housing count, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't all the, all the units go to our housing count?
No, it's not forty B.
Yeah, correct, right.
This isn't a forty B, Chip.
Yeah.
No, but it's a rental.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that if you'd like. Peter Tam co-counsel for Jay and his team. The clarification is to Mr. McIntosh's point, this is absolutely going to comply with Wakefield's requirement for affordable housing available to low and moderate income. There will be local preference to the extent compliant with law. And it is a rental project. Those eighty-seven units is a very significant change in terms of an impact to provide the diversification and affordability that the town is looking for. So when we're talking about a project of scale, those eighty-seven units are effectively subsidized by the market units. Those eighty-seven units count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory. The market units do not.
So understood on that point. My actual point is, the presentation said we'll be available to moderate income. I want to understand if there really is a statutory or regulatory, whatever, difference between. I want to understand if there really is statutory or regulatory, whatever, difference between low and moderate income?
There, there aren't, in the sense that the, they're available to low and moderate income households. There will be a lottery, it will be regulated. DHCD's requirements have to apply here in order for these units to count. There'll be a regulatory agreement that is recorded on the property that, that DHCD has to approve. And so when you talk about eligibility, eligible households that do not exceed the income limitations based on household size will qualify for the lottery. I would imagine in a, in a project like this, it will be very popular. And, and obviously, what we see in practice, and Jay, you can correct me if I'm wrong. What we see in practice is there is a limited number of three-bedroom units here. So that's where a lot of the school age impacts are traditionally associated, and we've kept that down here. However, the typical households in the, in the one or two bedrooms, it's a lot of working class, what you would consider to be more workforce housing. A lot of school teachers, a lot of policemen, a lot of municipal workers and, and folks that take advantage of, of the subsidy that is provided. And eighty-seven units is not insignificant in, in a town like Wakefield.
Yeah, no, we're unfortunate, we're extremely familiar with forty B and where accounts are. So I think we, we already understand the significance, but it was just very interesting to me that it was almost pointedly said moderate. So I, I think we can discuss it, you know, but it's just something I want to.
Intend to, to mislead in any way, but in, in general, they're available for up to moderate income, right? So you, you easily qualify if you're low income, and you will still qualify if you're moderate income.
Understood. Point taken. Chip, did you have anything else?
Are these affordable housing? Are they, are they spread out between all three buildings?
Yes, there's a requirement that they be dispersed throughout.
Okay.
And of the four eighty-five, can you just give a unit breakdown? Can somebody, one, two, and three bedroom? I don't think I heard that, no.
We have that information. We can certainly provide you, we actually have a pretty detailed table and spreadsheet that we could share at a subsequent session.
Not affordable, Peter. I'm sorry. No, just the total count.
Sally, could you please provide just the percentages?
Yep. So right now, we're looking at about twelve percent studio units, fifty-seven percent one-bedroom units, twenty-seven percent two-bedroom units, and four percent three beds. And I was rounding on the fly, so if that comes out to one oh one or ninety-nine percent, let me know.
Okay, we're, we're used to dealing in hard unit counts, not percentages, but, but I assume your parking calculations take into effect that the three bedrooms require two parking spaces and not one and a half?
Yes.
And with, and with that, you still meet it with the ratio you presented?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Hey, David.
Chairman?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
Couple of quick ones. I don't really even need a response tonight, but just trying to initial reaction and maybe lay down a couple of markers. One, I do think it's still too big. It's a lot of units, a lot of parking spaces for the head of the lake. Appreciate, also, it was a comprehensive filing, so I do appreciate, there's a lot of good material in there. But, and some good environmental work is being done, but there's also a loss of eighteen pretty significant trees. You know, more than twelve inches caliper and four of them are over thirty inches of caliper. So we're talking about replacing those with two and a half, three and a half inch trees. So I'll be interested in that discussion. And some of those big trees, I think, are right on the edges of some of where the, the buildings are located. So I wonder, I'll be wondering about that if some more trees can be saved by moving some of the buildings. Also be very interested in the traffic, given my concern about size and the number of parking spaces. And I took a look at the transportation demand management plan that was included in there. It's pretty weak right now, so we'll be, I'll be looking to, you know, have some further discussions on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, and Mike Feely, one quick question. I'd further to Greg's question about the affordability to low income and moderate income. For, as far as household income goes, what's the percentage of AMI that fits those two categories?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent is, is low income?
No, eighty percent is, is moderate income. Low income would typically be fifty percent.
Fifty percent or less. Okay.
Anyone else?
And we can, Mr. Feely, we, through the chairman, we can, we can quantify what that is specifically, if you're interested.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, if anyone else was thinking of comments, I'll just add, it'd be good to get this slide presentation sent to us, so we have it for the record. Brian, as we always like to have copies of the materials presented. It's good, and I'm encouraged to see the, the use of a website to keep any interested parties up to date on the progress of the project. I think we've done it with a couple of the projects in town, most recently, I think, Tarrant Lane, where we linked it into our town's website, maybe on the Board of Appeals page or somewhere off the, the top. But it'd be good to do that. We can follow up with the appropriate folks in Town Hall to do that. I think it'll help folks who are looking for updates. I appreciate what you presented tonight. I know a lot of work has gone into it and all the meetings that have taken place before, actually filing with this board. I like the overall concept of redeveloping that thing into something much more functional and useful and incorporating elements with, with the pathway and the public way. I think it hits a lot of points. I think, I think, you know, like the other board members, we got to get into the details a bit more and understand better how it will all work. And especially, yeah, traffic and so forth. But, you know, I, I like the, the overall concept of redeveloping the site. It's just something much more functional than what's there today. So that's just my initial thought, or a couple of thoughts. Anyone else before we open it up? Okay, so, again, for the general public, I know someone had reached out to me, Peter Scott, where are you? I'm going to defer to Peter. He reached out to me the other day. He asked for a couple of minutes. Peter. There you are. So, yeah, thank you. So before we get started, again, we're going to try to keep this limited, because this is the first of several meetings on this project, obviously. This has been an opening presentation. We'd like to just limit comments and questions to general. And again, try to avoid repeating. Again, we, we can understand there's already concerns about what's going on here, but we'd like to just time box it ten, fifteen minutes perhaps for initial comments. And then, as, as you heard, we've got several other hearings after this one. So Peter, I know you wanted to share, you should be able to do that. If you want to still share something, or do you just want to?
Yes, no, I like, I would like to, if I can figure out where it.
Down the bottom, there should be a share screen.
Yeah, I've got the share, but.
Share the right thing.
All right.
And then once Peter's done, we'll get to the other, see a few other hands up.
You see me now?
We see it.
All right. I'll try to make this as succinct and quick as I possibly can. I'm an architect, twenty-five Avon Street, been in Wakefield since nineteen seventy. My good friend and colleague, Brian Thompson, also an architect and also recently retired, as I am, got interested in the project when the yard signs started cropping up around town in opposition. Got hold of the, the last major design in, in May of last year, before the project stalled. And Brian is trained as well, Harvard, no less, as an urban designer. And he spent a couple of weeks and he produced a master plan for this whole area. I would like to show you a couple of key pieces of it quickly. There is one particular aspect left from this master plan that we think really should be incorporated in this design. I might back up and point out that it was Brian's work and a three-hour initial meeting with the two lead people at Friends of Lake Quanapawat, which eventually started the process of getting them back to the table and got us to where we are today. Brian, let me see, how do I do this? Page down. His master plan looked at the current site that we're talking about, but it also extended across to the Lakeside Office Park and also to a possible future transit complex down here at the, at the end. Yeah, by the way, it's very interesting to know, he did this without knowledge of the twenty fifteen version of the, of a master plan, of a housing study by Avicus. So great minds, I guess. It's a three-dimensional study, and it was, it was very detailed. As I said, it took us three hours to work our way through it the first time. You're not going to get that here. But this is a view from the east with our side here on the right-hand side. Looking from the other direction, here's the, the transit complex. Here would be a possible redevelopment of Lakeside Office Park, which may in fact be coming someplace, someplace down the line. The one issue that I want to address is the pathway. This is the last version of the pathway that I was allowed to have. But you may recognize this from the, from the drawings you have just seen. This plan replicates the circulation of Quanapawat Parkway from the nineteen fifty-seven version, basically. And we think it was a bad idea then, and it's a bad idea now. The, the diversion of the road around the back of the site like this was done at that time because the front of American Mutual was placed on this side of the building facing the highway, so that they showed the highway there, their best face. When you saw the pictures that Ally showed earlier, looking from this side, it was clearly the rear end of the building, and that's what's looking towards the lake. So in any event, if you look at the two variations, this is where it is now. I tilted this around with north at the upside at top of the drawing, but it's the same site. Brian's master plan strongly proposes that Quanapawat Parkway follow a route more appropriate to its name as a parkway, and then it continues straight across the side here. And that feeds into the site, be treated as driveways separately without through traffic going on it. But the main, any through traffic be diverted across at this point. This has the advantage, if that were to be done, to provide a much stronger difference between or separation between the privately owned residential properties here and the publicly owned park space. Now, if you think of park spaces in general, think of major ones in your mind, and I bet you every single one of them surrounded by roads, starting with Central Park in New York City, the Boston Common and Public Gardens, Wakefield Public Commons. Imagine the Upper Common in Wakefield without, without Main Street going through. And the lawn just goes up against the buildings there, maybe a pathway. The whole feel of that space would be completely different. And that's what will happen here, too, in our opinion, if in fact the road is allowed to curl around the back of the site. People still cut through here, including a number of people from Friends of Lake Quanapawat, so they know about that. We, we grant that doing this makes the site a little bit more attractive for through traffic, but there are a number of tools that can be used to slow that down and control it. There's also, by the by, a section of the master plan, which addresses, as I said earlier, the Lakeside Office Park. This is a view from the north, looking down towards the lake. This is Quanapawat Parkway here. And the proposal is that if that site gets developed, that we start thinking now about the notion of separating the new built environment here as well from new public lands in large green spaces, about four, four and a half acres of it alongside the lake, which will be then part of a walkway system that could continue all the way along next to the lake and not have people walk all the way up and down the west side of Lake Quanapawat along North Avenue. That's as fast as I can go. There's a lot more detail to this, if anybody's interested at some point.
Thank you, Peter. We appreciate the, the input. All right, the next hand I saw, I think, go up was Chris Crone. So please, you can unmute yourself and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Christopher Crone at one fourteen Main Street. And thank you to the board tonight for, for the opportunity to speak. I'm a longtime member of this community. My home at one fourteen Main Street looks directly out upon two hundred Lake Quanapawat development. I'm also a member of the Friends of Lake Quanapawat. However, I stand in strong opposition to this development. I want to address some comments that we heard tonight briefly and some that we didn't. First, with respect to the comments in the presentation, let's be clear. This is not a community-based project intended to address the housing needs or low-income housing needs of our community. This is about a business developer who sees an opportunity to make money for himself and his shareholders and nothing more. And to be clear, there is no shortage of unaffordable housing in our community or the surrounding communities. Okay, Mr. McGrail's reference to the now expired Wakefield Housing Production Plan was a bit off point. Putting aside whether it's valid at this point or not, it is expired. The language that Mr. McGrail pointed to expressly contemplates residential developments in areas removed from the Lakeside neighborhood. Okay, to imply that this is, this is a suggestion. Excuse me. This is, this is a, a production plan that would suggest that development should occur in this neighborhood, I believe, is in the statement. Mr. D'Amico described the project as reasonable and conservative in size. Respectfully, this is simply tone deaf. This would be one of the largest developments in our town, period. It's of no surprise that none of the images that we saw tonight from this presentation was a, was a perspective view from Main Street or the Town Common of the development, something intended to capture the, the size and height of this development. Okay, and that is despite having requested this, that perspective view several times in negotiations with the Friends. In the conservation land that they proposed a grant to the town is no compromise at all. This is wetlands. It's absolutely worthless to CCNF. They can't build upon it. It has no value. And the giant covered parking garage that they propose is not an increase to impervious ground considerations, right? This is, this, this is the opposite. It's a giant parking garage. It's, it's not impervious to the, to groundwater. Don't be fooled. These arguments simply carry no weight. A few of the issues that we didn't hear tonight. Disruption. There's a word. We didn't hear it at all. Disruption to our town with a project of this size, particularly at a time when our businesses are trying desperately to recover from this pandemic, could be devastating. During the construction, which could take years, parking and lake access would be substantially impaired. The noise and impact of the construction equipment blocking the pathway around the lake would be unavoidable. And after construction, the public access would be forever reduced. This does not increase public access. This property, as it stands now, is a staging ground for countless walks, runs, community events that in any normal year would occur virtually every weekend. These events are just now starting to return to our community, and this development threatens to eliminate this very important public function. And the light and noise pollution of development of this size, right on the shores of our lake, would be blinded.
Can we bring it to some closure, Mr. Crone, please?
Sure. Thank you. You know, I, I think at this point, they haven't attempted to address the burden on our schools, the roads and congestion around the lake. I understand that may come at a later point, but certainly is, is a substantial concern of a development of this size. And finally, I just note that the town has just completed its reelection process. And several of our town officials ran on platforms promising to reduce overdevelopment in our town. Several had the ideas similar to ours to create a recreational space on this land that the whole town could use. Now, these are not just off-the-cup ideas. They reflect the thoughts and opinions of our town people themselves. These goals are possible, and if we give them a chance to succeed. So in short, I'd urge the board to deny the request. Let's see how the many other housing developments that are already under construction in the town satisfy the housing needs before allowing this development to ruin what could be the greatest natural asset our town has to offer. Thank you. I look forward to future hearings.
Thank you. Peter, hands up again, but I think we got to move on to other folks. Rada? Can unmute yourself, Rada?
Okay, I'm unmuting myself. Hello.
Hi.
Hi, thank you so much. I I own a business downtown and I was interested in different aspects about this project and asking questions. But something came to my attention. The pathway up front where current pathway for the, you know, where we are walking and potential biking. Somebody suggested, a gentleman before this, suggested that that should be a roadway. That would be a catastrophe to have a roadway right along the lake by the water and preventing people to enjoy the view in the lake. And it would be just a catastrophe for this project, but please don't do it. And the roadway that goes around the project is just fine. But my question is, the pathway in front of the lake, would that accommodate bike path? Because just because we don't have a clear bike path currently around the lake, that does not mean that we will not have it in the future. So I think the project developer should consider that that pathway up front of the lake that should be wide enough to accommodate jogging, walking, and potential bike path. Also, something else that came to my attention, a lot of greenery and a lot of upkeep in the future you're going to have. And I'm concerned about what type of product and pesticides, what type of things they will use in order to maintain that lush development look residential that everybody wants. But this is along the lake. And I'm concerned about in the future whether that project will have a company, that management company, that can change over time. And who knows what they can use? So this is something concerned for me, being this close. It does not have to be answered right now, but I just wanted to raise that as a potential and make sure that we we are clear what they will be using to maintaining the greenery around the project. So that's sort of what it came to me right now. And I also wanted to ask, I hear a lot about café, but I also read that there's a restaurant. So I'm confused about the mixed use. What will this project have? For instance, I am, tonight I'm here in a few business people, business friends that are asking me to be here to ask some of these questions. They're interested in perhaps owning a business in that project, perhaps opening a restaurant there, perhaps, whatever that is. And my question is, how many of those? Would there be any retailer? Would there be any, like a gift shop? Would there be a restaurant? How big of a capacity that restaurant would be? That's something that I would like to hear that in the future, whether that's tonight or not. And I actually
Twenty seconds, please, Rada.
Okay, I have one more thing. Because if we're going to build a project like this, I would like to have some type of a connection from that project I talked about. That could be like a bike rental, a shuttle, so that people can use that from the residents in that complex that can be used and use our downtown. Thus helping our businesses like myself and other restaurants versus just becoming a bedroom community. So I think something that project should have some type of a, you know, bike rentals or shuttling or some type of that. They truly are connected to the community, to downtown, to help our business and not hurt us. And I do like to hear more about what type of a mixed use they're planning to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Rada. Ron, one.
Good evening, and thank you for having a public input on this. For those of you who know me, you may be shocked that I am almost speechless on this. I want it on record that I hope that Cabot-Cabit and Forbes understands the vast majority of Wakefield residents do not like and do not want this project. I echo Mr. Crone. This is a slow-motion assault, not only on our lake, but on our community. Cabot-Cabit and Forbes may do some nice work, but they're urban developers. We are not urban. We are suburban. This will be a catastrophe, not only for our lake and those who live around it, but I believe to the town it will change the fundamental character and timber of our community. When I first saw the pictures of the renderings this evening, my mouth literally fell open. That is a complex, an urban complex that you would see in Boston and Cambridge. All of the nice words, the promises, the pretty packaging, we all know, let's acknowledge, is only just to sell this enormous, sprawling, oversized whale of a project that will, no matter what anyone says, impact our schools, our roads, and God help us, do not put a road on the edge of the lake, please. I think that at the very, very least, Cabot-Cabit and Forbes needs to go back and rethink this, because the town of Wakefield does not want them here. With 485 units is appalling. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Carl. Welcome, Carl.
Hello. Carl Dunlap, 18 King Street in Wakefield. I'm also a business owner at the Lakeside Office Park, which is right next to Honeydew Donuts, so right in the same neighborhood as well. I guess my biggest concern here is, you know, we looked at the history of this site, and it's, you know, always been a business. It's in what's called a limited business district. I didn't realize the term limited business means to limit the amount of business and put in residential, because 485 units of residential going in somewhere where there's zero residents today seems a little bit changing the character of that property, which I guess is why you need a special permit to allow that. I also am concerned about the lack of places for business in Wakefield. So if this site goes to 485 residential units and one restaurant, which is a percentage of 0.2%, so 99.8% residential development and 0.2% business. I think that's kind of a joke to call that mixed use, but whatever. You never get that back, and that affects our tax base. So to the question of the financial impact, I think that's important. The businesses pay a higher tax rate. The residential uses more services, obviously. So I am concerned about that and the size of that development. Also, I guess I just want to understand, when I look up this property, I see that on the board of the assessor's site, it's owned by Waterstone Wakefield LLC. I just want to understand the relationship with Waterstone Wakefield and Cabot-Cabit and Forbes. My guess is that Cabot and Cabot and Forbes has a PNS agreement to purchase this conditional upon a granting of a permit for midsize and garden-style apartments. And if that doesn't happen, I would want to know what, you know, what Cabot-Cabit and Forbes would do. If they walk away from it, would Wakefield, Waterstone Wakefield still own the property? So I may be totally wrong on that, but I'd like some clarification from, you know, one of the many attorneys on the call about that. And yeah, that's really, I have, so the history of it. I also wanted to point out that wasn't mentioned in the history that I think the zoning board of appeals had a meeting that approved this for lab space at one point, and that wasn't mentioned. So I think this was marketed as a corporate campus and was approved for lab space. That seemed to be kind of glanced over and gone straight into residential. So I would encourage the board to deny a permit in this case, because it's just not the right use for the property. Thank you.
Well, to one of your points, yes. Waterstone was the previous applicant that the board granted permits to for its R and D and office use.
Are they still the current owner?
I would have to defer to Attorney McGrail or the team.
Hi, it's Jade Arty. We have a contract to acquire the site. Waterstone is the current owner. And at this time, our plan is to work with the town to complete an approval for the project and to then acquire the site.
Is that contract conditional on approval for residential? Or would you do something if it was business?
I don't think it's appropriate to get into the details of the contract. I would say that a couple of things about the prior approval. One, I would point out that the prior approval grants that proposed project the ability to do 600 parking spaces, all of which would be a grade. One of the big differentiators here, there is somewhat more parking, obviously, but it's a $15 million or $20 million investment to put a garage in place. And we think that's important to the health of the recharge of the water and to the visual impact of the project. The second thing is, it's uncertain as to whether the existing building is truly suitable for reuses lab. The life sciences community has changed its physical requirements of buildings quite a bit. There are about a third of the life sciences market now looks to make what's called GMP, manufacturing of drugs. And that typically requires a greater proportion of the space to be taller, perhaps as tall as 30 feet high. And that's what's being undertaken increasingly for life sciences. So we're not very certain as to whether or not the project could be devoted to life sciences, whether or not if the town denies a project outright for residential, it would revert to that use. It's so uncertain, I couldn't comment on.
Thank you. I realize everybody likes the idea of redevelopment. I think I encourage that as well. I just, my personal opinion would be redevelopment as a commercial space. And I do know GMP environments, and I work in them and work with Fortune 1000 companies that build them, and it could be redeveloped for that as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Okay, and the last hand I see up, Julie Scott's iPhone.
Hi there, this is Julie Scott's iPhone. I'm watching another meeting, so I don't want you to see me because I've got another computer with another Wakefield meeting going on behind me. I just want to say, this is just overly large to put such a dense population living spaces on our lake. For every 200 cars that you put in that area, it equals one mile of traffic. And with what we have now, it's almost three miles worth of traffic. If you look at what they've got projected, it's probably more than three miles of traffic added to our community. As a teacher, I know that schools rely on the taxes that business comes in, and I'm concerned about losing this as a business space for Wakefield. This is something larger than what we have down on Audubon Road. Unfortunately, I don't understand why putting one of the largest units Wakefield has ever had on the lake is such a good idea. I wish it had been on Audubon Road that we had thought of putting the large stuff and putting the smaller stuff that we find on Audubon Road, maybe on the lake, but it's too late to go back. Right now, when it's in use, right now it's not. During the day, there's business, and the people leave, and they go home at night. If we had people living there, our lakeside area would have those people living there, walking as pedestrians, more traffic on our roads. You're talking about hundreds and hundreds of cars trying to get downtown. We are not talking about expanding downtown areas to park. We already have an issue, a supposed issue with parking. I don't know how this would help out. And I've been to almost all of the meetings that were available to FOLQ, and I know they've talked about shuttles and have biking and stuff like that. It's, I don't believe any of that. I'm really worried about our community and the quality of life in Wakefield if we add this and what it could possibly do to our schools as well. Thank you.
Julie, just for the record, I'm sorry, I forgot to capture your address, please.
I'm 226 Main Street, Wakefield, right on the lake.
Yeah, thank you, just for the record. I see one more hand. I'm going to entertain that, and then we'll close with a public testimony for the evening. RS, you're going to have to state your name and address for the record.
Rick Stewart, 157 Salem Street. I have a quick question. I watched a planning board meeting the other night, and they made a statement that for this site, there's going to require a four-foot-high extension of fill for the entire site as part of this process. Is that true? The entire site has to be raised four feet?
I can speak to that. That's not true. There's fill going in in certain areas of the site. We're about, you know, six inches to a foot above the existing building's grade.
How many truckloads of fill would require to complete that process?
I can't necessarily speak to that right now, but I can get back to you on that.
Hundreds?
I probably wouldn't say hundreds, but I, you know, we'd have to look at that analysis, but we're looking at, you know, on average, like six inches to a foot above what the current building is at.
Thank you. Appreciate it. But I'm just going to reiterate, like many other people said here, you know, I believe this, it's inappropriate development for that area for all the reasons stated, especially, again, more reduction in business community areas. We're seeing it all around town, places that traditionally for businesses are being converted now to residential. You know, at some point, we have to stop and have a balance. So my one recommendation is, I believe the zoning board should just enforce all the current regulations. Don't provide any variances at this point. You know, let them develop based off of what the zoning currently allows, and don't provide any additional relief going forward for this project. Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay, so with that, we'll close. Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Before you close it, I'd like to know if Mr. Crone was speaking on behalf of FOLQ. He certainly seemed to make that point that he was a member and had a pretty good speech going. So was he representing FOLQ? And if not, I'd love to hear from Mr. Conley, who I think is the president of FOLQ, because all I kept hearing through everything before they got to us is that they've been dealing with FOLQ. So I'd like to not have misrepresentations or find out if fills available.
Well, this is Chris Crone. To be absolutely clear, I was not representing the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat. I represented myself and my wife, my family.
Okay, great. Your first statement was you were a member of it, and you were against it.
So, okay, great. I just wanted to know if you were speaking on behalf of
Can you recognize me just for a brief statement? Bill Conley, 83 Elm Street.
I will, Bill. Chip is asked, and we will entertain that. Please go ahead. Can you just
Everybody. I'm glad Chris cleared that up. Our involvement in this project has been substantial. And I will be brief. We went from opposition to agreeing with the project. We were looking at certain things. We weren't looking at an extended agenda. We were looking at lake issues and the importance of water quality conservation, improving and increasing parkland, and reasonable dimensions and footprints. And I think they're part of the plan that Cabot and Cabot is presenting tonight. I think the plan certainly needs to be looked at relative to additional issues affecting the town. But we are in support of it because it does address our core issues, given that development and the zoning and the likelihood of alternatives to residential not really presenting itself, and no existing plan in place to do anything that others would imagine could be worked there, like recreational space, that we are close to agreeing with Cabot and Cabot Forbes. And I think you'll see a lot of what we're talking about and agreeing in the plan when it is, as it is submitted. So that's our statement tonight. I'm speaking for the board of the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat. And we'll be happy to answer any other questions in subsequent meetings as well. And we'll be happy to answer any other questions in subsequent meetings as well.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the clarification.
Okay. All right, back to the board. So. I think Brian had put up briefly, Brian, do you want to?
Yeah, if I could, if I could just address one thing, Mr. Chair, quickly.
And then if you can put your slide back up there.
Can I share the screen?
Sure. And then we'll just go on.
I just want to reference this because Mr. Kroom made a comment that I won't say he said he made a misrepresentation, but there might have been a misunderstanding. This is the housing production plan that I referenced. This is the North Ave at 128 District, highlighting an orange lakeside transit oriented development. You can see that our property is right in the middle of that. When you look at the comment that Mr. Kroom made, let's go to the language. It states much of this district is removed from the lakeside neighborhood and could accommodate mid-rise or even low high-rise buildings. Didn't say it should be, it said it is. And when you look at the plan. Here's your residential neighborhood that shows on this plan. Our property is the farthest one from it. So it's it's an estate, it's a statement of fact in this report. It's not a statement of qualification. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, agenda, I assume we're gonna get into the architectural. And design and massing where we usually start at the next meeting and the team will be prepared to do that, Brian.
We will.
Okay, and closing remarks, board members, before we continue this.
Mr. Chair, very quick, I noticed Brian had the economic impact kind of discussion study, whatever, pretty late in the. Chronology. One suggestion or question would be, should we move that earlier? Because that could really affect kind of the massing, the sizing, not necessarily the architecture, but. You know, based on how many people are. How many units, you know, affect town services and stuff like that? It it looked to me like it was going to be one of the last things discussed and I think it really should almost be flip flopped.
Yeah, and and Greg, if Ellie, you want to put up the list? Because I didn't mean to put it up as an order.
Oh, okay, okay.
Listing the items. So I mean, and that's a point, Matt, can you can you give an update of where we are with the economic report when we'll be ready to submit that? I think it's pretty close, right?
Yeah, so we have a fiscal impact study, which will be in a position to circulate with the town next week.
We can get to a pretty quick, Greg.
Okay.
And then my question would be, you know, the other comments we heard tonight is, you know, three miles of traffic, the usual rhetoric about something this big, which is, you know, legitimate. So when it, where are you at with transportation and traffic?
So I I figured that would come up. So we we've submitted everything to the Traffic Advisory Committee, Town's Peer Review Consultant. I reached out to Lieutenant Anderson, the chair of the TAC today, and I said, any idea when the TAC might meet on this? I suspect the Board of Appeals may ask this evening. Not rushing, just want a rough idea to report. And he reported back, he said, I'm trying to set up a meeting for the month of May as soon as I can. I'll be in touch. So. That was a response.
Yeah, so I'm I'm in agreement with everybody else, Mr. Or with Greg, that economics should push up to the front. Keep traffic to the front. You know, but certainly start with that architectural and design and kind of understand massing at that same point of time.
Makes sense. Good suggestion, Greg. Okay. So. I don't know if we'd be prepared to do that all in one meeting, just in the interest of time, but maybe architectural next meeting. Spend some time on that. And would you be ready to do our economic as part of that? Or maybe the follow on meeting in May?
Right, Mr. Chair, I I also have another suggestion. We can already see that the amount of. Interest from the town is great. And given the amount of other things we have during normal meetings, you know, I'm kind of not in favor of staying up till midnight every two weeks. Because at some point our brains go a little soft. It might make some sense to do. Special meetings for this project on a special night where it's just this topic. I mean, even tonight, I don't know exactly what time it is, but I think we spent about two and a half hours on. Or we will by the end. So just a thought, just a thought, and maybe we can start with architectural and see how it goes in one of our morning, our normal meeting nights. But I I feel there's going to be two, two and a half hours of discussion every time this this. Unit comes up on whatever topic it is. Just my gut.
We can do that. Let's discuss it at the next meeting. So that, yeah, we can, we can move things along if the team is prepared to. Get into certain topics, several topics, we can have special meetings on this. We just have to announce them and notice.
Yeah.
It's certainly doable. Absolutely. Okay.
Be a thought if other, I, you know, we can discuss it, but it's a thought I had.
It's just in the interest of time. I don't want to discuss it tonight.
Yeah, no.
It's been about an hour and a half, I think, but on this specific one. But anyway. All right, with that. I would entertain a motion to continue.
So is that until the this, what's the specific date on that, Mr. Chair?
May 12th, I believe.
Continue to May 12th at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we continue to May 12th at 7:00 PM, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, I'm in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I think Amy has stepped out. Okay. With that, we are continued. Thanks, team, for the initial presentation. We'll talk to you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a couple more hearings there, Jim. I heard that, yawn.
Next new hearing, 21-53 Michael Moore Mino. Hopefully pronounced that correctly at 218 Vernon Street.
That's me. And you got it right.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. All right, so you're representing yourselves this evening?
Nope, I actually have somebody from the contractor here to speak on my behalf.
Okay.
Tracy Sharkey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. Tracy Sharkey, 14 West Street, Douglas, Mass. We are here tonight requesting a special permit with respect to a continuation and extension. Of a nonconforming use to raise and replace the single story structure and increase to one and a half stories. So we are holding the side setback line as shown on the plot plan submitted.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you share or can the applicant share? A copy of the plan?
Yep, in one second. So approximately 50% of the proposed new garage height will be. An increase in the nonconformity. The other 50% is within the envelope. So let me just find the application. Okay.
Yeah, I think mainly be looking at the plot plan initially, if you have that.
Yep, I will.
We'll get to go to architecturals if the board members want to go there, but at least the plot plan to give everyone a stance visually.
Okay.
For those members of the public.
Okay. Okay, so here we have the plot of the land. It is a nonconforming lot with only 92 feet of frontage. The location of the existing house and the existing single story, kind of in rough shape garage is cited on here, remove and demolish. And we are proposing in the gray actually shown on here for the replacement. So you can see the setback line and approximately half. This back half would be the increase in nonconformity. This portion would be within the setback. So the the proposed garage would be proportional to the existing home there. And. I think the five letters of support were submitted to the board. So I don't believe there was any objections on the directive butters. So I can answer any other questions. The proposed new garage would be up to building code. It would be aesthetically more pleasing than the existing garage. So I think it would be an improvement. And they would be able to park two cars in. It's going to be a single door 20 foot wide.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Miss Sharkey, so you you've applied for a special permit. But 19050 is usually findings.
Correct. So there was a concern that because of the increase of the height, the board may want to. Issue a special permit for the intensifying of the existing nonconformity. But would find that it's not more detrimental than the existing.
Belt and suspenders.
Right, no, it's just.
Yeah.
Normally, if there's multiple aspects to a project, there'd be a filing of a special permit and maybe a finding or a variance in a finding. Normally, you don't have a special permit. And a finding, all in one application. Gail, does this ring a bell with you? Did? Did they consult with the building department on this?
We, they probably did, but we don't advise on, you know, what forms of relief. They're acting themselves and yeah, that's one area we don't go into.
Okay. Because I'm not sure I just if if the board would need to grant a special permit in addition to making the finding.
Dave, this goes along to what what we do. And Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the the. You know, what we normally do is finding that it's a continuation of the nonconformity and we find that it increases the nonconformity, that it's not any more detrimental to the neighborhood. Isn't that the belt and suspenders, part A, part B, that we normally do?
I think that's what we normally do. And I apologize, my hand was up. I don't even know how I did that. I did not. If that's why you called on me, Jeff.
No, I called on you because you're our lawyer.
Okay, just making sure.
So.
Well, I'm not.
You have to, you have to start.
Hold on.
Having that role sometime.
As Brian can probably let you know, I now have to, I am not your lawyer. I am a lawyer.
A lawyer, a lawyer.
No, I I would agree. I think that's what we normally.
See, what an answer that was.
On the other hand. Because they, I guess I don't even understand what the application for the special permit is for, because that's what we normally do.
It doesn't make any sense.
Can we, without an application for the finding? Can we make the finding instead of issuing a special permit?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I did apply under Article 9, Section 190-50. The only hesitation was the intensifying of the height. So I am creating a new nonconformity where there is not one at this moment. That's why I had requested the special permit for that back piece where I'm not holding the height.
Understood. I'm just not sure. If a special permit's required, our 19050B in this case, I don't think it goes to A because that's a. That's a single or two family structure. This is a preexisting nonconforming building structure or use, and I would call this a building being an accessory. Building to the prop on the property, maybe changed, extended or altered, provided that it. Will be permitted unless we make a finding that such change shall not be more, so not be substantially more detrimental. Than the existing nonconformity. So. All costs don't necessarily come into play with one.
Just the one.
Just the one. In in where they're increasing the height but keeping the same footprint. That's what we would have to consider, whether that increase in height. Would be substantially more detrimental. And if it weren't, I think we can make the finding without a special permit, even though the application is sort of. Anyway, if anyone has any other comments, questions?
Just to clarify, though, it is not keeping the same footprint, right? There's the extension, you said, the 50% extension.
Of height. So the footprint is. Actually expanding, but it's standing within the allowed setback. So I can pull up the plan again.
Yeah, if you can, because I I thought that's what I read or heard, that it was same footprint, just different height.
No, it's not the same footprint. It is actually getting larger. So we're increasing on the left side, looking into the property. So you have the hatch line right here. You have the existing garage right here. Here's an arrow and it only extends to this point. It's just a one car. So we're, but we're extending within the setbacks. There's a little spot right there.
Right, okay. My bad. So.
That's okay.
Right, normally, Dave, we have a situation where it goes to the side yard or something else, but that. That nonconformity is not increasing. The only nonconformity that I see is increasing. Which isn't really a nonconformity because there's no height, the height limitation isn't being exceeded. I, yeah, I I don't see the special permit and.
So the increase in the height is sometimes considered an intensification on that back portion within the the required setback. But I did.
I can see, I can think that, but I don't think we would. I I personally would not see it that way.
But but either way, if it is, it's still 19050B. And we just have that one prompt finding the extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming use.
Substantial.
Yeah, yeah, but either way, whatever we find, I'm not advocating.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a.
I don't see it as substantial.
Yeah.
You know, it it would, if you put in a second story on it, then I might consider it, but this is just reconfiguring a roof so that you've got sort of an attic in it.
Storage.
Storage, right.
And I did leave it open ended just to do the 150-50. On the application.
Yep.
Does the board want to see the architectural plans?
Sure.
Okay. Just give me one second.
Meantime, I'm just checking, checking the ballot on itself.
Mr. Chair, could I even ask, wasn't there something recently where this happened again? And I don't want to put Brian on the spot, but I may. Where, and I think it was again, not one of his clients, but he pointed out that. I I want to say it was this, that we could make the finding of our own. Kind of motion rather than actually what the application said. I can't find the language that he was, I can't, I want to say it was. The same thing. But I can't find the actual. Language at the moment. language at the moment.
He's not going to answer you.
He doesn't care.
He's in another room feeding his dog.
He's recovering from the last hearing.
I didn't want to make it difficult for you guys after that. You needed a break. I I would be, and I'm sure the applicant would be amenable to uh um, a just a determination or finding from the board. Um, essentially, that's what special permits do anyway. Um, so you're not necessarily making any um, you know, precedent setting decisions. So I would be amenable to that if that's what the board um, which direction the board wants to go in.
Yeah, I mean, again, if if we feel we're doing the right thing and just granting the finding, if if it were to do that. Um, A, you know, if it were to be appealed, would it stand up if if we if all the full relief that may have been required wasn't granted? Um, or if there's future problems on the road if the property attempts to be sold, there's a title problem, because there was some relief that should have been there that wasn't grandfathered or wasn't part of the um the title or deed. So um, because everything gets registered. So we just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. I I I'm leaning that way as well. We're just making sure.
Okay.
But uh, and are you attorney yourself? I'm sorry if I missed that.
No, I'm not.
You're the architect or the?
Um, I work for Guaranteed Builders.
Okay.
Actor.
Okay. Our board members, I I I I think I'm there with with a finding here.
Does more want to see any other pictures? So this is the portion, so we're at about thirteen feet. So the existing building is about this height. So the back portion, which is here, would be the nonconforming area.
Right, so from a height perspective, some intensification because that that corner is near the lot line.
Correct.
And already known. Yeah, yeah. Understood.
Tracy, do you have a, of the before picture of what you have there right now? It might be good to show that.
Yes, one moment. So I'll show you all my emails that are unanswered.
And we, and the board certainly appreciates why you're doing that to the applicant, that uh, you did speak to your neighbors and and get their input. Not everyone knows that, and it's important, I think, for whether it's a finding or a variance or whatever, that you let your neighbors know what you're thinking of doing and getting, you know, try to address any concerns before you come here. So kudos for doing that. And it's good to hear the neighbors are in support. That's helpful. Wonder what the existing building was used for. It has a chimney and back in the day, that thing's probably rather old, right?
It used to be, there used to be a greenhouse, and that was attached to the greenhouse.
Dave, you must drive by it every day, right?
Okay, so board, we have right here the garage. You can see the proposed garage will be uh, in the likeness of the existing house roof, but much shorter. This is the condition.
I can certainly see why the neighbors were in support.
Exactly.
Um, here is another side view. Rear view. And another close up.
This question is the fence. Yours or theirs? It's close to that garage.
Um, we're not really sure, but whatever happens, we'll be replacing it, and we're we're coordinating with all the neighbors about that.
Okay, because it looked like from that back picture that it may not have been the the sturdiest back there and.
Yeah, they're actually in the process of, they're in the process of rebuilding that right now. We're kind of split up with them right now in terms of getting it all taken care of.
Okay.
And it does appear to be right on the lot line. Showing on this right here.
Yeah.
Existing stockade fence. Down to the granite bound.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions, board members? Uh, Concom reviewed it and said they had no concerns, not within their jurisdiction, fire departments. Um, no objections, no concerns. So just for the record, we did hear from those two town boards. If nothing else at this time, we can certainly open up the public testimony. Anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call on you. Going once, going twice. All right, seeing no hands, we'll close with public testimony. To the board.
The only thing I need, Dave, is the name of the site plan. It was Metro West, but I didn't see what the date was.
Uh, Northwest Engineering. Two twenty-two, right? What I can see, two twenty-two.
Yeah.
Um, and then the architecturals as.
GBI two three twenty twenty-one.
Right, you got it.
Yeah. So, Mister Chair, I move that we find under one ninety dash fifty B that uh, given the site plan from Northwest Engineering dated two twenty-two, twenty twenty-one presented this evening, and the architectural plans from GBI dated two three twenty twenty-one, that the uh, proposed project that we find that the proposed project as presented to us this evening is not uh, any more detriment is not, although there is an increase to the nonconformity, it is no more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Substantially more detrimental.
What?
It is not substantially more.
Is not substantially more detrimental.
Just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
No worries.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Um, just, I just ran out to check um, some paperwork that I had on filing for a similar sort of garage at my house. And you are on track, because what I filed for was one ninety dash fifty B. That's all, and that was approved at the time in oh seven.
Okay.
Just FYI, basically.
Thank you.
Can I rethink that vote?
All right, so uh, again, Amy isn't here, one of our regular voting members. Um, so it'll be myself, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Tom, second of the motion. Um, all in favor. Chip.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Joe.
Bye.
And I vote in favor. So that is unanimous. Okay, so you have your finding. Um, normally, the attorneys representing our clients would uh, probably draft something, but seeing you have none, I'll I'll draft the decision. I'll get it out to you. If you can, Gail, do we have their emails? Already, if not.
Um, yes, I believe I do. I have guaranteed builders, I believe, don't I?
Yes, you do. And I can draft something up if you wanted me to email it over to you, and you can.
My decision.
I'm sorry?
Drafting a decision?
Yeah.
Okay, if you want to do that, just
Yeah.
send it to Gail. She'll forward it on, and I'll I'll look it over and make any updates and.
Okay.
And um, we'll get it filed as, and um, and if you can, just include um the electronic copies of the plans that you shared tonight that were part of the application.
Yeah.
We just like to have electronic copies along with the paper ones.
Yeah, I believe um, we sent Gail the entire application electronic, but I'll just double check that with my offer.
No, you need to resend that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Very much, board. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Right, good luck. Um, next case is twenty-one dash fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven Albion Street Reborn LLC, thirteen to fifteen Albion. Mister Penny, I believe, is the applicant's.
Yes, Mister Jim. Can you hear me?
I can um. I just have some questions here, looking over the file. What you've applied for here and what you're thinking of doing. I guess, board members, I I do have some questions about whether the applicant has actually filed um, all the proper, for all the proper relief here. Um, and I'm wondering if we open the hearing or we discuss uh, maybe my concerns if anyone else has similar ones. Uh, because if we do that, then the the applicant may have to refile. And we would have to either, you know, just continue the hearing and until such time that any such deficiencies, again, if I'm if I'm correct, um, are corrected. Um, rather than getting into the details without having all of the proper applications in front of us.
Um, so, Mister Chairman, I don't think you have to open them. I think you can. We can talk about that without opening that, so that he can make the corrections if needed.
All right, so Mister Penny, if you, if you.
And, and even if there is a new application as part of this application, we have to renotice that. Anyways, if even if there's a addition, because it is a new application.
It is, it would be renoticed.
Yeah, so it's going to have to be, well, no, I shouldn't say it's going to, if we come to that another application needs to be filed, even just a separate one, would have to be renoticed anyway. So opening or whatever doesn't.
Doesn't matter.
Right, I it just, right, what we shouldn't do is entertain discussion and get into the details. Um, again, without the full notice um, of all, even though the the existing ones were noticed. Um, so, Mister Penny, if you'll, if you'll bear with me for a moment. So you've made four applications of finding. Um. A variance, uh, two variances under different paragraphs of um, one ninety thirty-two B uh, regarding the lot size and the lot area per unit and of off-street parking. Um, and those in and of themselves um, may be valid, uh, given what you're trying to do and uh, request to do. But where I think there may be a problem is normally to entertain um, what you're attempting to do here, basically converting a a building that has been uh, historically business use into one in the business district, into a mixed use um, with residential above um, other uh, retailer or um, businesses. I think we need to entertain this as a special permit under one ninety thirty-two as a mixed use development. And we may also need to entertain it under one ninety thirty-two dot one with which addresses reductions and or alterations to the dimensional controls or requirements under one ninety thirty-two D in table two, which lists setbacks, height, et cetera. So I think those other sections of the bylaw come into play here. And perhaps in addition to what you've already filed, but I I don't know that we can entertain them unto themselves without also getting into the aspects of the mixed use and the other aspects of dimensional relief that may be required to do what you want to do. So other board members, I don't know if you have any um, thoughts or questions on that, if you've got the bylaws handy. Again, I went through this earlier. Um, and trying to, trying to make sure I understand it properly.
But what I find difficult, and maybe Mister Penny can answer this, but normally people get represented by counsel on situations like this, because it is fairly complex. So I'm just wondering what Mister Penny was thinking.
Uh. There's quite a story that goes along with this building. It was abandoned. It's contaminated. Uh, Savage Cleaners operated there for a number of years. I got involved in twenty sixteen and purchased the property and have spent a lot of time and effort dealing with the contamination. We've removed a bunch of the heating wall contaminator from the basement. We've put a sub slab venting system in and poured a new basement floor to prevent the vapors from the dry cleaning solvent from entering the building. We've also put in a biological treatment system, and we've run it for the last year. Just now, we're starting to see promising results. The contamination is dropping. And I had worked with Paul Rivas, I guess the former planning director, for a couple of years. And what I filed is based on what Mister Rivas recommended I do.
Hmm, okay. Well, he's been retired for almost a year, but um, I I no doubt, if if you spoke to him and he thought that was the right thing to do. I, I don't know. I'm struggling with it, because I I don't know how we don't get into dimensional relief. Um, the the variances you cite around lot area are small, are perhaps also required, but the other aspects of setbacks and height and and so forth, and the special permit to begin with. I I just don't know how we.
Mister Jimmy Anderson, this building goes, dates back to eighteen eighty-four.
Understood. But you're intending to, it's all, it's it's strictly been business use, recommending that it be converted to.
Now, originally, it was residential, second and third floor, and just as recently as nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-five, the assessors office has it listed as residential.
But that's been abandoned for a number of years.
Well, it's flip-flop back and forth.
You'd have, right, I mean, you'd have to provide proof of that.
I don't know how I'd go about doing that.
Yeah, that's why I think you need help on this, Mister. I think.
As I said, it it seems like a a small property, and appreciate what you've done to try to remediate the the issues on the on the site. Um, I just, I don't, I I I just don't feel comfortable moving forward without having these other applications, because I think some of those aspects are going to come into play. Um, you know, that the granting of a special permit um is more than just, I think, what you've applied for. Um, the variant, those two specific variances, and a special permit related off-street parking are just I think a subset of what the board needs to consider when we're looking at what may happen at the site. Um. Again, even though it's an existing building and it's not a large site. Um, I think the special permit comes into play, and I just, I'm having trouble getting past that.
Mister Jim, I don't want to cause any aggravation. It's late. Uh. But the special permit they were talking about is only for parking. Two variances of finding and a special permit for parking. Finding that it's no more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Dave, you still have to go from business to mixed use.
Correct.
I mean, we gotta, we gotta get the use squared away before we even talk about the variances.
Right, if we don't know the history of the building, Mister Penny, like, what is it classified as officially? Um, what has been the history? And we've dealt with this with some older properties. And usually, somebody's done their due diligence and researching how it's been used in the past. Um. And provided us evidence so we know how it's properly classified, how it's been used. Um, and again. I think there's, it may not be enough just to grant variances on very specific paragraphs and parking without considering the other aspects of a mixed use as part of a special permit. This is a, this would be a a mixed use. I don't know if you'd call it a garden apartment building by the definition, but there's, there's lot frontage, lot width, height, setbacks in addition to parking, that would all be noncompliant. And we would need to find that the the requirements of a special permit um, that could be met with all of those deficiencies.
For us, if I could, I've spent a fair amount of time with the registry researching the titles for this property, and I'll tell you what I know. And then you tell me what I should do, but according to the available records, this three-story brick building was constructed in eighteen eighty-four with a fruit store on the first floor and the residence of the owner on the second and third floors. The original owner was a William Guile, and later it was owned by a Charles Spiro. The layout of the property is proximity to the surrounding properties. I have shown on a plan if I could bring it up and share my screen.
Again, I'm hesitant to go too far with this.
Okay.
Now we're starting to get into the details, and I just, I don't want to go too far without ensuring that we have the proper filing of all the applications, and everyone's been noticed, even though they've been noticed about what you've already filed for. Um, other board members, I don't know. Other board members, I don't know, I'm gonna. Our attorneys. Or others, I mean. You've been on the board for a while, Tom, you've been here, Jim, I mean, I'm just. I'm just not comfortable and I, I don't know if you guys.
I I agree. I'm sympathetic to the applicant, but I don't think we have what we need before us to do anything tonight.
Are you, are you thinking the same thing that we need the special permit and maybe even the dimensional relief aspects? Okay.
I mean, Dave, and I think I'm with you here, but just to kind of. Put a fine point on the issue is it's the changing the use of the building. Or at least, or at least officially, maybe it's been unofficially used as that for a while, I don't know. Changing the use of the building, we have to look at that, the special permit section.
Well, some somewhere it went through a transition, it seems, when it went from. You know, residence, ownership residence, basically, to an office building. And now it wants to go back to residence, so we need to understand what the pathway was there. Was there any notification of change at that time and a decision made at that time to allow? For basically a business to occupy the whole building. Or was it, you know, pre-code type type of thing that where this happened, but. Like, like in the past, we've had, you know, electric bills or something else that shows us basically how. The place transitioned, whether, you know, so.
So I don't even think we need to go that far, Jim, because that's usually in a case where it's an appeal to us. This is, he is saying that he is changing the use.
Right.
So. We just need that application. If it was a saying, hey, this, you know, in the past where it's, you know, showing the census records or showing, like you said, electric bills. Then it's usually in saying, hey, it's, this is grandfathered in, it has been used as this, even though. Town, you know, somebody building, said it wasn't, this is saying it's changing use.
It's, it's been grandfathered in in this respect is for some time it's been used as an office building. So, you know, that was the last use. Whether it, whether legally it it folded over from one to the other, who the heck knows, and we may never know. On the other hand, it is being, you know, if if you say, you say the building's grandfathered right now as it stands. Well, as it stands right now, it's all office space, basically, and commercial space on the first floor. So now you do go to, we can, how do we convert back to what it theoretically originally was, which makes sense. Basically, and that's what a lot of these buildings were. You lived on the, you lived in the building you worked out of basically on the first floor.
Mr. Penny, when you were at the registry, did you find any previous decisions for this property filed? No?
No use changes.
Okay, that's interesting. I mean, it, it could have evolved and people just didn't do it and. Nobody's sort of. Questioned or challenged it, but it it certainly could happen today and we would want to make sure that we're considering and granting the right relief.
And it's been, it's been represented to us that it's not used as that right now, too, so.
Correct, correct. So, that's what I'm going to recommend on behalf of the board, and then I think that's what you're hearing, Mr. Penny. And we're not trying to give you a hard time, you know, we we appreciate what you're trying to do to make better use of a building that maybe is underutilized. But I just, we want to be sure we do the right thing. It protects you, it protects the board, any potential future appeals. And again, this, this gets registered in it, any future uses or changes of uses have this as part of the record. So whether you confer with an attorney or anyone else that can help guide you. We can only recommend, because you people usually do, especially where there's something not as straightforward perhaps is. Rebuilding a garage or some of the other applications we may have. This one gets a little involved and maybe has some history. Again, we can recommend, we can't force or enforce that, but we may recommend you. Confer with somebody else on this and just make sure you apply for any other relief that we think you may need.
Well, what would be the problem with going forward, would I have now in seeking relief under these four submissions? And then what would I do when I try to go for a building permit, the building inspector would deny me?
I mean, possibly I can't speak to what they would do, if somebody could challenge them. You know, every up, every decision we make gets filed and there's an appeal period of twenty business days. Somebody could challenge that we didn't grant the proper relief. It would get appealed and it would be contested, you know, you know, in a court.
And I think.
I don't want to cause any problems and I know it's late at night. I, I did work with Paul for almost two years on this. I, I am a professional civil engineer and I've been on the planning board here in Mansfield for thirty years. I think we nailed it down, but. I I gotta admit, your zoning bylaws, I understand it's a living document, it's a little tough to understand it all.
How many units are we talking about?
Two.
So you don't, you don't actually qualify under one ninety dash thirty-two. Because it's less than four.
Yes.
So Dave, that's even another wrinkle.
And I, I miss the mixed-use overlay district by two lots, it's across the street. And it's two lots to the east of me towards Main Street.
Okay, so you're not, that was another question, I I didn't think you were, but.
Initially, I told, I was told I was, and then I bought the property and lo and behold, I wasn't.
Yeah, Greg, do you have your bylaws right there? I don't have mine with me. Can you check the definition of multi-family and bylaw definition?
Unless someone else is already there.
Family is four or more.
Right, so it's not a multi-family.
It's not mid-rise, because that's a multi-family, more than three stories, garden style is multi-family, three or less. But again, because it's not considered multi-family.
Dave, can you just run through, my, I'm mute now, real quick again, what, now that we've been running around everything else, what are the actual applications again?
A finding. Under one ninety fifty B. A variance under one ninety thirty-two B one around the lot area per unit. A variance under one ninety thirty-two B two around lot size. And a special permit under one ninety thirty-six C regarding off-street parking.
So Dave, what, the way I see this, if he applied under one ninety dash thirty-two. One ninety dash thirty-two doesn't even apply. He's asking for variance and under one ninety dash thirty-two. It's just the wrong application.
Right, because those paragraphs are are part of multi-family.
Correct, and this doesn't qualify. So I, I think we've just got a whole lot of issues here that need. Looking at, I, I'm not comfortable going forward, I can't.
Mr. Chairman, one ninety thirty-two also applies to mixed-use development. That's, that's what I'm applying.
You've got less, you've got less units.
Than a multi-family.
It doesn't, it doesn't apply.
But I'm applying under mixed use.
And mixed-use projects that create street levels.
Because I'm within, what? Less than two hundred and two thousand five hundred feet from the train station. A smaller lot size per unit is allowed.
Yeah, and under one ninety, you know, thirty-two B one, the minimum lot size for a housing or mixed-use project. Is four thousand square feet, right, so he's applying for relief from that. It says or mixed use. In paragraph two, where we're housing, whether mid-rise, garden, attached rooms or combinations of same. Minimum seven hundred square, fifty square feet per lot, of lot area per unit. Doesn't say mixed use there. Just says mid-rise, garden, attached, or combinations of same. So, again, I I will grant you that that bylaw isn't always the most clear and it it could be confusing. But. I'm just not sure what you've applied for is. Is, is. Complete and or correct, right, and it's not, again, we we're just giving you our thoughts on what we think. Ultimately, you know, the the burden is on you to confirm what you need to apply for and apply for it. Again, I would advise you to maybe reach out to somebody else, as Paul has since retired and maybe may or may not have been. Hundred percent correct in his recommendations, I I can't speak for Paul, he's not here. But that's, that would be my recommendation, and you know, the worst case is you confirm that what you've applied for is correct. Maybe we have a conversation offline and confirm that with town council or other resources we can lean on. And the worst case is you just come back at the next hearing. And we, and we move on, but if you do have to reapply, then that again goes to notice, we'd be thirty days out and maybe we'd be meeting in June. So we would get here, it's just it may be a little later, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, I've been on this project since twenty sixteen, another year won't even bother me. Because this cleanup is going to take ten years, it's, it's okay, I don't want to cause you gentlemen any grief this evening.
All right, well, then, rather than covering ground we've already covered, why don't we just table it? I, again, I don't know that we can continue it, because we don't know where we're going to continue it to. Because you may need to refile and then it pushes us out. So, I, I don't know, board members, the proper thing is to just to table this matter for the evening?
I move that we table it.
Yeah. All right. Second, thank you, any discussion? All favorite chip?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Boom?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I go yes, okay, so thank you for entertaining us, Mr. Penny, I appreciate it and your patience with us here and hopefully we'll, we'll see you at a future meeting. All right.
How should I proceed now, or?
Pardon?
How should I proceed? Did you say you were going to request something from town council?
No, I think you, you should probably confer with somebody else.
Go hire an attorney.
Or at least speak to one who's willing to give some free advice, but. I'm saying that we might want to double-check our, just to make sure we have proper understanding, too, if such a case doesn't arise. That we're just a little more clear for our own purposes, so, but that's just more on the board.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Fred, Mr. Penny, feel free to call me tomorrow, I'm happy to give you some free legal advice.
Right, I'm fumbling for your phone number right now and I, I have it on my phone, I'll give you a call.
And I'll give you, thank you very much. I'll give you free legal advice tomorrow.
No, 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 no.
Yes, yes, yes. Call me tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Brian, thank you, Mr. Penny, have a good night and we'll, we'll talk again.
That's when Brian shows up, not when I ask.
The hero at the end.
I'll give you nothing, right?
I don't know, you probably didn't hear earlier, I was like, I think Brian said this like a year ago. And you just said it.
All right, our next new hearing, twenty-one dash fifty-eight, Mass Mini Mart two, Inc., at ten to twelve Vernon Street.
Oh, look, Brian's back.
Oh, I'm back. Yep. Hold on, Mr. Chairman, to set this up. Look at my emails, how's that? We appreciate that, I'm sure your clients do, too. They have nothing to hide. Okay. Uh, thank you. For the record, representing Mass Mini Mart two, Inc., property at ten twelve Vernon Street. Attorney Brian McGreal, Pardeep Kumar is here on behalf of Mass Mini Mart. This property is situated at Vernon Street ten, ten dash twelve, it's also known as the. Route, route one twenty-nine, Quick Stop, or one twenty-nine Quick Stop. Which is a convenience store. Kind of at the intersection of Vernon Street and Water Street, as you take a left, kind of near McClellan Concrete. Mr. Kumar has been running the business for some time, some board members might recall. Mr. Hatfield, Tabell, you were on this back in two thousand and seven. When this property was rebuilt, the building was rebuilt. And the, and that's where I think the pit stop went in, the barbecue. And Mr. Kumar's business is next door and he runs a convenience store. We've applied for a fast food special permit, there's really nothing significant here, all he wants to be able to do. Is to be able to sell sandwiches and pizza and breakfast sandwiches. All of the, all of the stuff will pretty, be pretty much pre-made and frozen and he will reheat it. The sandwiches will be made fresh. There will be no exterior alterations to the building, so he doesn't have to put in any venting for hoods or or stoves. He actually has. If I may share. Floor plan. Can the board see the floor plan?
Not yet.
You can open up the video.
Oh, it started to come up. There you go, now you got it?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, so what he wants to do is just set up a little area in the back of the store, this is where you come in. And he just wants to have a counter and be able to have some equipment there. To be able to prepare the frozen food or prepare fresh subs and sandwiches. Basically, coffee and Ben, the Christopher, the building inspector, made a determination, he said, I don't know what percent sale that you're going to have here. So you need to, you need to get a fast food special permit. To give you an idea of his. Menu. Pretty simple menu that he's put together. Just some breakfast sandwiches. Lunch menu is basic, pizza's going to be frozen, he just reheats it, that's why he doesn't need any venting on the outside. He's making cold subs and sandwiches and and then just some sides. Just gonna, it's basically going to be a kind of an add-on to his business to try to help cash flow. No seating also, no seating. Okay.
Brian, do you have to go through public, Board of Public Health here, too, or?
I'm sure, I'm sure, Pardeep, have you spoken with the Board of Health yet?
Yeah. Yes, I'm, hi, everyone, I'm already talking with the. Coral, and then she, I'm like, she's waiting from my end that. If the, the Board of Field approve that thing and, and then I'm okay to proceed. She came to the store like twice, like three times, and then that's what I'm waiting for.
Dave, do we have anything from them?
No. No, just. Ten engineer, no comments, fire department, no objections, concom, not in their jurisdiction. So. So. It would be good to get something from the Board of Health, so I'm not sure, Brian, if I. If I fully understood you, so they're waiting for us to make a determination and then they're gonna.
I, I think basically, I mean, it's a separate, it's a separate process, he's going to have to get a food permit from the Board of Health. And that's in in addition to your fast food. And and that's in in addition to your fast food. So they they really, they're really separate permits. I mean, you could grant your special permit if you decide to do so. And if for some reason they didn't see it as a fit location for food service. They wouldn't issue their food permit. But I don't think you need to wait for them. I mean, certainly that's your your decision. You could even put a condition in that you, you know, you, he needs to get any and all Board of Health required approvals for the for the for the food service. That will be fine.
He would need to get those to open anyways.
He does great. Yeah.
I'd be comfortable, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because he would get if he didn't.
He wouldn't be able to open.
Well, even if you know, kind of opened on the side, they would shut him down.
Yeah, I don't think he's able to say, I thought it was okay because.
She came over there. We have everything. We have three base sink. We have all that, whatever they require by the the town. I have everything over there.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not changing the convenience store as much as we're just putting in another receiving counter. Are we actually changing the configuration of the convenience store?
No, we are just putting the the small counter for the for the for the food service. That's it.
On the left side there.
Yeah, you see it now? Yeah. So Pardeep, are you are you putting you're putting in this counter?
No, like on the left-hand side, the checkout counters already exist, this one.
Yeah, so just in here?
Yes.
Yeah.
So how about signage? We went through this some for quick part or whatever, quick.
Yeah, they got a sign. You're not going to change anything outside on the sign, right?
No.
Well, it goes to the ten percent of window signage because it's it's got pretty nasty at times as to signage on the windows. And and with this, there's going to be sort of a. Feeling that the more sign is going to go on the window to advertise this particular operation now, so. I guess we would, or I would like to know what's going to happen on the windows.
With the windows. Sorry, can I speak?
Yes.
Yeah, the windows stay 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 like as it is. The only the top like ten inch part, that where I can put the sign, the windows, it should be like. The visit visible from the outside.
You're just going to put a menu board up inside?
Yeah, no menu on the window.
All right, so we're not changing anything on the windows as they exist now.
Yes, no.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts, board members?
No.
Okay. Again, I read correspondence. So we'll open it up to public testimony. Anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. We'll entertain that at this time. Being no hands, we'll close it to public testimony.
Hi, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant. The fast food permit to. One twenty-eight, is it one twenty-nine Quick Stop? Or is there a different LLC that we're granting it to?
Uh, Mass Mini Mart Two, Inc.
Mass Mini Mart Two, Inc.
Are you, oh, I didn't know if you were still.
I wasn't still contemplating a thing.
Oh, okay. Because we had a plan, but it's not really dated or annotated.
Nor nor do we. It's interior. They're not doing anything outside, so I don't really care what they do inside.
Okay, so that is your motion, granting a special permit. Okay. Anyone care to second?
Somebody feel free to second it.
Second.
With with vigor. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, that was Michael, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. So voting members on this, myself, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Michael. All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that is unanimous. You have your special permit. Good luck with the Board of Health.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck to your business.
Thank you. I might know Joe.
He's smiling, I guess so.
Yeah, I used to have the business in Beacon Hill. That's why he used to come over there.
Was that me?
Yes.
Beacon Hill, yeah, my wife used to live there.
Yeah, in the Top Shelf. You remember?
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, nice to see you again.
Yeah.
All right, let's stop happy hour.
Stop in and say hello.
Yeah, okay.
Take care.
Thank you, John. Thanks, thanks.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, case twenty-one dash fifty-nine, Elizabeth A. Lombardo at two forty-nine Nahan Street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, representing Elizabeth Lombardo, attorney Brian McGrail, property at two forty-nine Nahad Street. Elizabeth is on with us. And. Also with us is her architect, Mike Avini. Mike, are you here somewhere?
I am.
Oh, hi, Michael. Oh, you're nice to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you as well.
I wanted to bring Mike. So this this might be familiar, I'm sure will be familiar to the board. This is the property at two forty-nine Nahad Street where we divided the property. So it's a little studio next door. And and then and so there were two houses. I think probably, let me let me do this. Refresh the board's memory.
It was the music studio.
Correct.
Right. That had no electricity, no plumbing.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Here we go.
Poor Brian took piano lessons, if I remember right.
Can you see that, guys?
Yep.
Great. So this was a studio that we got the permit to build a home there with the variance. And then this is, this is the house that was associated with it, two forty-nine. And just to refresh the board's memory, so it's a house setback here. This is a pretty big lot. So what the board did is the board put a condition on this. When it was approved, the variance and what the condition stated. In the variance to separate this house, read as follows. And it's it was submitted with it. I submitted a copy of it with the application. It said, the existing square footage and the setbacks of the single-family dwelling located on the property shall not change without formally applying for. And subsequently attaining a modification of this variance from the board. So when when Elizabeth went to, Elizabeth wants to put a dormer on it to give some, one of the bedrooms some room. She applied for a permit. The building inspector astutely noticed the condition. And said, you know, gee, we got to get this looked at. He called Jim McBane, board member McBane, went down. And it was determined that we needed to apply for modification as the condition stated to allow this to happen. This condition was put on for the folks out back. That attended that hearing, Pat and Lauren Thorman, nice folks that, you know, they wanted to know what was going on with this property. So so that's why we're here to request a modification of this variance to put. A dormer or raise the roof a little bit in the back. And with that said, I think it would be appropriate. Mike, can you kind of explain to the board what's happening here?
I would be happy to. Can I, um, do you want to share my screen? Yeah, Commissioner, allow me to share my screen?
It's true. Yeah, everyone should be able to.
All right. So let's see if I can share. Okay, can you see it? Can you see my screen?
Coming up.
There you go.
Yep, yes.
Awesome, great, thank you. So, uh, thank you. Commissioners and board members. And thank you, Mr. McGrail, Attorney McGrail. So what we have here is, again, the property at two forty-nine Nahad Street. And the plans that you see here in front of you are the second floor plans. What we'd like to do is build a small dormer on the back right-hand corner of the existing building. As you saw on the on the shot that Attorney McGrail shared with you, and I will share with you in a minute. The second floor of the structure now, there's a part here, and can you see, can you see my cursor as well?
Yes.
Excellent. So the line of slope ceiling here, you walk up these stairs. And there's the the dormer that I'll show you that exists is right here. And then you walk into this bedroom. This back bedroom here, this modified bedroom is not yet finished. It's all pretty much raw studs. If I had to guess, this house was built circa nineteen twenty. When Ms. Lombardo bought the house, they found the building permit for the garage. In the garage, the card looked fantastic and it was in the nineteen twenty. So I'm assuming this is pretty close, post and beam type of construction. But the the point of the story is that the the middle of this house is about about seven feet tall. So the the really, the usable bedroom spaces is much, very much limited. So in order to make this a little more livable and. Ms. Lombardo thought about, okay, how do we make this bedroom more usable for her? And the obvious answer was to add a dormer to it, add a small bathroom up there so that both of the bedrooms could share it. And make the the modified bedroom just a little bigger. So let me just, let me do one. Let me, this might tell the picture a little better here. We can all see this photo here. This is the existing conditions of the backside of two two forty-nine Hahn Street. The building that you see on the right is two forty-three Nahad Street. And I believe if I understood Attorney McGrail's opening statement. The variance that was granted for the two, what's now, I think, two fifty-one included that this building couldn't be modified. And that was at the request of the two forty-three, the residents at two forty-three Nahad Street. So that again, there's the proximity that you can see. So what we'd like to do, I'm right here where my cursor is, is where the the proposed dormer would go. And I apologize for the crude photo here, but I did this kind of, I whipped it together today so that I could at least share with the board. Kind of what we're looking to do. We won't raise the roof right now. This is a very short structure. Again, it's about seven feet to the to this, the limited flat ceiling here. Will tie into the existing ridge, so the structure will not get any taller. The back wall of this dormer might be a foot or so higher than the back wall of this dormer to get some headroom. To make it worth really doing. But again, as you can see, we're not going outside the footprint of the building at all. I suspect but for the condition in the zone, in the decision to build the house next door, that we probably wouldn't even be here. It seems like it's a pretty simple thing. And I will share with you one other thing. I don't know if Attorney McGrail had this, but this is kind of a lot. So this is the Hahn Street, two forty-nine, the garage that we spoke about a little bit. Two forty-three is back over here somewhere. And this this lot is a very irregularly shaped. It doesn't meet the frontage, but it's weird because it because there's a pretty good chunk of lot out back that's somewhat wooded and overgrown. So expansion further back there probably doesn't make much sense. And obviously, there's a condition in the zoning that they're not looking at. I'm sorry, a condition of the decision that they're not looking to really do much there. But we'd like to take advantage of the opportunity to potentially not expand the footprint, not raise the height of the building. And make it a little more usable.
Thank you, Mike. So we think it's it's a reasonable ask and my client Elizabeth is is here. She did speak with. With Pat and Lauren Thorman at two forty-three, and I actually think Warren is on the meeting. Will probably want to be heard. But we we don't, you know, we obviously, this is why you put the condition in. And with the opportunity, so you you did contemplate that there could be changes. You just wanted to make sure that whatever was done was vetted and talked about and everybody knew it. And was comfortable with it. So here we are.
I think this sort of is, you know, it stays within the footprint. It doesn't raise the height of the roof. It seems appropriate in the way it's presented at this point, in my opinion, anyway.
Thank you. And can I just raise one more thing too? Contrary to some of the other things that we heard tonight, Elizabeth Lombardo is a Wakefield resident, a lifelong Wakefield resident. She, this is her first house that she was lucky enough to be able to buy and stay in Wakefield, so. This isn't a builder looking to do something here. This is a young lady who would like to continue her life in the town that she was born and raised in.
Thank you for that. Board members, any other comments? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
I want to hear from the neighbor.
No, we will. We'll get there.
I know.
I just want to hear from board members first.
Is that just a small window on the backseat, thinking of, you know, the the. If I remember right, for some reason, was I not at this original meeting? I don't remember this at all, and I don't know why I wouldn't have been there, but maybe I'm just getting.
I'd have been having kids. I don't know.
Too many.
Yes.
The reason I ask is if this variance was at that neighbor's request, obviously views, you know, into their. Fair question. So, yeah, I had planned a small awning window there. Again, this this back wall here won't be much more than seven feet, so it's not like we can get a big window there. I'd like to expand the side window here so that it actually is code compliant for a bedroom. So these, this, the single window on the side of the house will be changed to a larger window. But this window that faces the two forty-three will be smaller, a small awning window just to let breeze in from different directions.
Yeah, Greg, we heard this last September, actually.
A year ago. We didn't hear it during COVID.
Greg did vote on it.
Is that dormer going all the way across? The dormer will connect from the existing dormer to the edge of the roof. Yes, it's about fourteen and a half to fifteen feet.
Greg, you weren't here. You missed that meeting.
Oh, good. I have no idea where I was. At least I'm not going crazy.
No, you're not.
Anything else, board members? All right, we'll open it up to public testimony then. If anyone has a comment or question. Use your hand in the Zoom meeting. Yes, Lauren Thorman.
With the with the neighbors at two forty-three, we have absolutely no problem with this at all. We're, the only reason that we, you know. Were concerned about, you know, you know, incredible growth of of the house or or multiple houses. That's the only reason that we were. You know, very interested in the last meeting. This is, this is absolutely fine.
Okay, and sorry, sir, you're not Lauren, I assume. State your name and address for the record, just.
It's Patrick Thorman, two forty-three Nahad Street.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Once, don't see any other hands. We'll close it to public testimony then. So Brian, this is a request to modify the existing variance. Or the existing decision or.
Modify the variance.
Yeah, modify the variance, yeah.
And how are we, we're modifying it to allow just this addition?
That's right.
That's been presented tonight.
Yep, the plan, the architectural plan will be incorporated into the decision. Created February twenty-seventh. By, who did them? MAA? No, 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 I'm looking for the company name usually.
I'm a self proprietor. I did it myself, a friend of the family, basically, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
So then, Brian, it's pretty, it will still be pretty explicit then that the the variance itself, I guess, actually continues, is that what?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the variance continues and this is like a.
Could be modified again if they came back.
Yeah, 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 but yeah, yeah, okay.
But that condition holds, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, someone care to make a motion?
Oh, sure. I didn't know we were ready for that, yeah.
Something to add, but.
I I move that we allow the modification of the condition. Created on the first. Uh, variance back. Created on the first uh, variance back in September. Uh, to allow the dormer addition as presented to us this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Regular voting members and Tom, back around to you, Tom. Um, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that is unanimous. You have your special uh, modification of your variance.
Thank you.
Buck?
Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep quiet, goose, line up. All right. Next new hearing, twenty-one dash sixty and twenty-one sixty-one. Keith J. Bernardo and Nicole J. Bernardo at seventeen Park Street.
They've been on since seven o'clock this evening. They deserve gold stars.
We appreciate their patience.
Yeah.
Yes.
You don't get a gold star, Brian.
No, I don't. Never do. Hi, Nicole. Hi, Keith.
Hi, Brian.
Nice to meet you. So I I've been, uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGreal representing Keith and Nicole Bernardo. Their property at seventeen Park Street uh, in Wakefield. Um, and I've been working with Keith and Nicole for probably about a year. Um, trying to to figure the the situation out. They purchased this property in two thousand eight, has has three residential units in it. Um, they were, they thought it was a legal three. Um, then, then basically, as you know, as it happens usually, in in trying to get ready to finance it. Um, questions came up. Um, and um, so they they, we looked into, you know, as we do, history. We really couldn't find anything on this to back it up, that we would be comfortable coming here saying. Oh, we can, we can make an argument that this is a legal pre-existing non-conforming uh, three. We wouldn't. We we would not be in good faith. We 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 couldn't really find anything to support that. We found it scattered information, but nothing consistent. So I said to uh, Keith and Nicole, the only avenue was is to try to convert it from a two to a three. And now that creates problems because uh, are concerned with the building code. Because, you know, now when you go to it, when you go to a four, um, you've got to sprinkle the building. And um, now it's questionable under the code if you have to do uh, with a three. So uh, to their credit. Uh, Nicole and Keith spent a lot of time with the fire department, Chief Sullivan. Um, with the building inspector, Mr. Christopher O, sorting this out and and. Um, they were able to determine that they would not have to sprinkle it. Um, and so now they've decided to to try to legalize this unit. Which is on um, the third floor of the building. And I can. Bring up some floor plans. Let me do the site plan first. Um, the site plan uh, shows that the property actually, it's 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 situated in the general residence district. Uh, it meets the uniquely, uh, and surprisingly, because this doesn't happen often, but it meets the lot area and the frontage requirement. For the general residence district. Um, and um, you know, but it does not meet the requirement for uh, conversion. Uh, because uh, for conversion, um, you have to have, um, I'm going to go to the bylaw. So you can remember, this has eight thousand square feet, ninety ninety-two, ninety-two feet of frontage, but eighty-two seventy-eight square footage. I'm sorry, I'd be jumping around on this, but it it is a little bit confusing, so please bear with me. Okay. So on the one ninety thirty-two. Gee. Um, a single or two-family dwelling in the general residence district or business district may be converted with the. Within the existing footprint and volume to a three or four family, provided that the dwelling is located on a lot with thirteen thousand square feet or more. So we obviously don't meet that requirement. We we're requesting a variance. There shall be a minimum lot area of thirty-five hundred square feet for each dwelling unit. Um, so that will be ten-five. We don't need that, uh, because we're at eighty-two hundreds, we're requesting relief from that. And then finally, there should be a minimum floor area of six hundred fifty square feet for each dwelling unit, provided, um, we do need that. Um, because of units, I'm going to go to the um, the floor plans. Bear with me, please. Thank you. Okay. So that's the the basement floor plan. This is the existing first floor plan, that nothing is changing. Second floor plan with a second unit is, nothing's changing on this. This is the existing third floor plan, where there is a little bit of a change, and I and I want to explain this to the board for its consideration. So. One of the things that they have to deal with on this unit is create a second means of egress. Uh, that's what the fire chief and um, the building inspector want. So what they're doing, what they're proposing to do, that is. Things going on. Here we go. Post third floor. So they, what they want, what they're going to do is create an exit here with a staircase going on the outside of the house. They're going to cut the back of the overhang, and so this is what they're going to create. A shed with the stairs down for that access to the third unit.
Brian, may I comment that the the stairs in this view are already there? And we're just going to be attaching to the existing stairs?
Oh, these stairs here.
Yeah, those are.
Yeah, because those serve the second story unit.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Keith. That helps. So you're really just going to construct from here and connect to it?
That's it, yep.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So one of the things that, so that's the new dormer in the back. And that's where the stairs would come down.
The only purpose of the dormer is to serve that doorway.
That's the purpose of the dormer, but it raises another question for the board's consideration, um, that I I I I need to point out. Because I don't know.
Are they going to ask for that whole staircase to be covered?
Hang on one second, Chip. If you, you you, Chip, you're asking if they can cover the whole staircase?
Well, no, I'm not asking if they can. Is Ben going to look for that?
Uh, Keith, I don't think he is, is he? He didn't say the stairs had to be covered.
No, that was um, not a requirement in it. Uh, the existing stairs are also not covered.
So what I want to point out to the board is that there's a provision in the bylaw that um, may be converted within the existing footprint in volume. So I don't know, you know, we've requested a variance from the requirements of this section. I I would defer to the board to say, is that dormer for egress purposes an increase in volume?
Well, you're not adding floor, you're not adding floor space, right? So.
No, and and, you know, and I don't, I don't know the answer. I mean, you know, that that to me is, it's almost like a case of first impression. It's for you to decide. I I. I don't know.
And I guess technically you are, right? You can.
Yeah.
When I think about volume, you could fit more air in there. That's volume. Floor space is different.
Be sure, Greg.
It 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 is, it is more volume. Um, it is more footprint. It's occupiable space, basically, is what it is. Not that you live in it, but you pass through it.
Yeah, you can put air in it, it's volume.
Yeah. Well, normally, from the architectural side, it's an occu- it would be defined as occupiable area, all right? So you could stand in it, move around in it, and that sort of thing. It's not a big deal, but it it is added area.
But we know that most of us, if not all of us, know the history of that bylaw and where it came from, and the true intent was to prevent. Like build outs of home, homes, converting it, and oh, by the way, we're going to throw this big addition on and convert it.
That's right.
Clearly, you're not doing this here. It, I I hear the point technically, by the letter of the law, yes, increasing volume. Um, but if it's, that's why I asked, sole purpose is just to serve the doorway, and you're not adding a room that has a door, or adding a. Adding the whole laundry room that has a door. It would be a little more. Harder to to justify, but I.
But I guess my my question is, because, I mean, we don't want to be saying we, well, yes, in this case, because it's easier to justify. Brian, could we take care of it either night, I mean, tonight, either way, in in a, or would you have to file a separate application or?
Oh, no, I've I've applied for it, Greg, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I applied for variance from that entire, from the requirements of that entire section.
Would it be appropriate to mention that we spoke to neighbors as well?
Oh, yeah, I was going to get to that.
Oh, okay.
But but since you started down the path, Keith, why don't you go ahead and inform the board?
Yeah. My my wife and I went and spoke to uh, as many neighbors as we could on the street. And uh, nobody had any opposition, and many of the folks even signed a a letter for us. Um, we have a lot of parking here. We can accommodate.
Yeah.
Uh, eleven cars, actually, that's not our our intent to increase the space, as you know, but it is fairly large.
So they have a parking spot here, and then on the other side, they have a very large driveway with a two-car garage.
But we don't have those letters in our record. Do you have them?
I have them. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'll bring them up and I'll email them.
Um, hang on.
Yeah, we'll include them in the file. Thank you.
It's good that you did that.
The two direct abutters to this property are on that list.
Okay.
What about behind, Brian, if we are, I mean, small, actually, never mind. I don't care. You can't see out there.
Yeah.
So I take that back.
Yeah.
Well, say we did receive other correspondence, so DPW. Um, oh, sorry, the town engineer. No comments, um, Concom not in their jurisdiction. Um, fire chief. And they put some recommendations in here. I assume you've seen them.
I have not.
Uh, okay, so. Because you mentioned it wouldn't have to be sprinkled, but you got to have hardwired smoke and CO detectors, must be complied with. They're not already there. Uh.
And those are already there.
Okay.
In conformity.
And then any substantial major renovation will require the installation of fire sprinklers, so. Again, you you reported that you met with them, and they determined that, given the the nature of this.
Now, not our architect also went to the site and uh, went through the entire building, as well as the garage. And uh, he noted that we we are not doing any uh, changes to the interior of the building whatsoever.
Um, I also received correspondence from um, perhaps uh, someone who um. Was notified of this application. We got a handwritten note. Uh, to the Board of Appeals. Hmm, uh, let's see if it's dated April twenty-second. Um, from, looks like it's 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 in cursive, so. Um, that's something we read as much um, these days, but so I'll do my best. Harry J. Petrucci, maybe? Dear sir, I am the owner of Two Bryant Ave. My family has lived in Wakefield for about a hundred and twenty years. My father, mother, and then myself have owned the property of Two Bryant Street for over seventy years. I am opposed to the granting of a special permit. Oh, sorry, this got put in the wrong, is this? Nope, this is the right property. Okay, sorry, I thought it was in the wrong. Um, for seventeen Park Street, because it would be a further change to the character of a neighborhood. Of one and two-family homes and further loss of green space as more parking would be necessary. Thank you for your consideration. Um, so they're uh. Expressing um, disapproval, but I'm not sure, maybe they didn't see the plans. Um, because there's no changes to the outside of the property, um, but. There it is. For the record.
Yeah, we we didn't speak to that person, and uh, I presume you're correct. They probably didn't see the plans.
Um, and Two Bryant, is that behind you?
That's out near, that's out near Main Street, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's true. I don't think that's near us.
It's near, but yeah, it's basically on Main Street.
They're probably also not aware that this has been operating as a three-family for some.
Yeah, the other, the other thing I just wanted to show the board, this is, this is the assessors' records. So it's kind of funky how, you know, going back to before the, before, you know, before uh, the Bernados bought the property, they bought it in oh, wait, right, guys?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so you know, this is kind of what led up to it. There's always references of three, and then all of a sudden, it it starts going, being references of two. I don't know why. It was even references of one back in the nineties, but but it was a three before that, so.
We were told it it was a three.
Yeah, I mean, but that's the, that's, that's why we 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 just in good faith can't come here and say, oh, you know, it could be a grandfather three, because it's just all scattered records on it.
Yep. Okay. So again, the board, we would have to find or vary. Um. You know, that that aspect of the volume, small volume increase for the um, for that dormer. As well as the um, square footage of the overall property or lot and the each dwelling unit. And you went to the um, six fifty. Are those shown on the plan? You went to the plans, but each of them are six fifty or more?
Yes.
They are, yeah, yeah. Not even close, Dave.
Okay, just making sure. It's noted on the plan.
In in the, in the neighbors in support are at nineteen, twenty, fifteen, eleven, eight, and sixteen Park Street.
Okay.
Any from Brian, Brian?
No. And and they just didn't go there, Tom. I I honestly asked the same question. I said, did you get, you taught, and they said they don't know the people. But they're pretty, they're fairly, um, let me just see here. Really. See. To kind of give you a. This might help you, Tom, from a perspective. They're kind of far away. Uh, the our property is a great property. It's a pretty, pretty good-sized property.
Yep.
Comparatively.
Dave, was it twenty Bryant?
Two.
I think it was two.
Oh, okay, I thought he said two. That's where I was looking to. Okay, yeah, so it's it's all the way out on Main Street.
No, I I know where. It's Harry Petrucci. I know where it is, yeah.
Yeah. Was, isn't it, is it two eighty-two, Tom? Aren't they there? What number is it? Two or two eighty-two, Dave?
He put Two Bryant Street.
If you look at, look for Two Bryant Street, it is that, Brian.
It is that. That's what I thought. Yeah.
I know who that is. Yeah.
Okay, anything else, board members? And, and we do have the, uh, the support of fifteen and nineteen. Good. That'd be the key ones, or two of. Right, got Nicole incorrect on that, right?
Yeah, fifteen, nineteen. We've got, I think it's eighteen across the street, sixteen, which is also across. Uh, number eight, I believe.
Eight and eleven.
Eight, eleven.
Yeah.
And both townhouses at eight.
Yeah, so, I mean, not that I wanna, words matter, but that Two Bryant Street, there are numerous. Two or three families on Park Street, so they're not all single family homes.
Well, you said single and two, but point taken. Yeah. What? Did you happen to speak your abutters on Bryant, twelve and sixteen and eighteen?
We haven't. We've actually, in the time that we've lived there, um, those are all rented. I don't even believe that the, um. The, they're not owner occupied.
Oh, okay, okay.
They've always been rented homes when we, um, were there. So we've never actually. Been in contact. I think the one time we might have, like, seen them in passing, but.
Okay, well, the owners would have been notified. I was just curious. I didn't know their status, but, okay. All right. Anything else? Board members? If not, for now, open it up to the public. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise it. Your hand in the Zoom meeting. Oh, look who's back.
Yeah.
You got your video running. I guess it wasn't a bad hair day, huh?
It was what?
Wasn't a bad hair day. That's why your video.
Ralph.
All right. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony. Back the board. So there's actually two, two votes needed, right here. Brian, the special permit just to do the conversion and the variance on the aspects that are not compliant.
Correct.
And assuming Chip might be contemplating such motions. Do you have the info you need, Chip, on the plot plan? Yeah. So I, I can help you. The, this, the plot plan is by Paul Finocchio. PJF Associates. It's dated February one, two thousand twenty-one. And the architectural plans are by Cornerstone Architects. Struggle on this one. Uh, dated February third, two thousand twenty-one. And this is the. Applicable section of the bylaw. Chip, I don't know. Is your in frozen or are you just looking at your? Looks like this video is frozen to me.
I think he's over. So, I can take this. I make the recommendation, we make a determination and finding to allow for the free family. Or the, the. The allowance of a three family at this location, along with the changes noted on the drawings for a doorway. Out of the. Over the rear of the property. Oh, actually, this was a special permit, isn't it?
Special permit, yeah. And then the variance is separate.
Right. We're making a recommendation for a special permit under article. Six, one ninety dash thirty-two G, item two. To allow for it, to allow this to be a free family. I think he fell off the table. To allow this property to be a free, um, a free family and to allow the conversions. On the third floor to allow for a means of egress out of the building as shown on drawing like. Cornerstone Architects, Inc. Uh, dated. Two, three, twenty-one. That's the motion.
Um, Joe also want to add the plot plan dated February first as well, just for the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I get a second on that amended motion, please?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All right.
I recuse myself, Dave.
Okay, Dave, Jim, Joe. I'm a Greg batter up. All in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. So it's unanimous. Now the variance. So a variance from the requirements of the existing building's footprint and volume for purposes of the dormer. Did we allow reduction in the square footage from thirteen thousand to, as shown on the site plan? Right, just allow a reduction from the minimum of thirty-five hundred square feet for each dwelling unit to a total of, a total as shown on the site plan. Those are the three, I think. Okay, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All right, same voting members, Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that's unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck to you.
Have a good rest of the night.
You too. You can log off. We have a couple more.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, moving right along. Twenty-one dash sixty-two, Christopher M. Frenny, Frenny. And Marilissa Frenny at sixteen Ames Street. Right, I'm here for the Frenneys. Marilissa, you made it. Yeah, Marilissa got the duty tonight. Her husband Chris had to work, so she had to stay up. So I represent attorney Brian McGrath, representing Chris and Marilissa Frenny. Uh, owns a property at sixteen Ames Street. This is appropriately, in my opinion, the, at late at night, the easiest one to deal with tonight. Pretty straightforward. If I can just get to that plan. And is this one that would normally be done by the zoning administrator? No, no, this needs you, this needs you. Cause we just did that, and I think it was just ratified, but, okay.
Yeah.
But you applied before that. So the Frenneys want to have a pretty simple request. They want to put a front porch on their house. And they need a finding, but they need it on the second prong, I think. This is the property. It's kind of a lot going on here, but everything is fine. This is the proposed front porch that they want to put on. Um, as you can see, the existing house is, is luckily, I guess, nineteen, only nineteen feet. Um, currently, the porch will go closer. And the front setback, all the dimensional requirements are up here in the right-hand corner of the site plan. Front setback requirement is twenty, existing is nineteen point one. Um, and it will obviously meet the side yard setbacks, uh, but since the front setback already does not comply. Um, they're able to do this with a finding. Um, but it would be a second prong finding that it's not substantially more detrimental. Um, to the neighborhood. Um, and I would argue that it's not. Um, I'm gonna give you a little. Photo of what it's gonna look like. Right, intensifying the existing nonconformity, but not substantially more detrimental. Yes, and this is the little architectural plan that they had done. So this kind of gives an idea of what the front porch is gonna look like on that house. Okay. So I would argue that it is not substantially. More detrimental. Especially considering that there's another street across the way, so nobody's really been looking at it.
This is a dead end, right, Brian?
Yeah.
It's the last house?
Yes.
So one stipulation, depending on where this goes, is I would not want to see this. Or enclosed at all in the future. So all right for a porch, but I don't want to see it enclosed in such a manner that it becomes an extension of the house. Or occupiable space near the building.
Marilissa, you understand that, right? You, you don't intend to enclose it, correct? No, okay. You're, you're a mute, by the way. There you go.
Okay, there I am. Sorry. Yeah, no, not at all. We want it open. We want it as a porch.
Okay. You'd be okay with it, you'd be okay with a condition to that effect, because we've done that before.
It may not be the current owner, it may be the next owner.
Correct. Okay.
Can we condition a finding?
I, I think you can, for the perspective that, yeah, you're, yeah, you're determining that it's not substantially more detrimental, as long as it's not enclosed. Right, as long as it remains a porch and it's not enclosed, correct. And if somebody ever changed that use, that would be then a need for a new. Application. Okay, any other comments, questions, board members? All right, hearing none, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question about this one. Please raise your hand. We're running out of people that are left. All right, seeing none, we'll close it to public testimony.
I recuse myself on this one too, Dave.
Okay, well, Amy's back and she heard this. And Joe, and I guess back to Michael.
Okay.
Spread it around tonight. So we need a. Get my paragraph out.
One ninety fifty B.
Uh, no, fifty A.
And B, right?
No, just fifty A. The second prong of fifty A. Correct. So we need a finding that the proposed changes to the existing structure as depicted on the. Site plan. Um, by Marchionda, an associate stated September twenty-second, twenty twenty. Are intensifying the existing nonconforming nature of the structure, but that we find that that. That change is not going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming, nonconformity to the neighborhood. That's what we need, and. Thank you, Amy. That's what we needed. Make a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. You have your finding. Good luck. And thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
All right, gang, we're in the home stretch. All right, that's it for new hearings. We have another matter at one sixty-eight Albion Street, AKA one seventy-eight, NRP Harvard Mills. And they're not going forward. Pardon? They're gonna, they're holding off for now, because they, they still, we're still working on some calculations with Mr. McVane. Oh, okay. I didn't know that. That's where we're headed tonight. Next meeting, perhaps? I think so.
Yeah, there, there. I sent out. A calculation sheet on four eleven, so they're reviewing it. I had to do that because it's complicated with a number of signs and the like, plus it's the old overall, it's the old sign code, so. They've got all the information. They just need to get back to me.
We just had to hire an architect to review Jim's calculation sheet. Make sure you get a peer review. Okay.
Is, is on, not signs, but on Harvard Mills, has there been any indication of when they're gonna open the street again? Cause it, not, not that you can get through anywhere right now, but I think they represented to us at the meeting that there'd be occasional shutdowns. But at least most of the staging would be on other. Property that they'd rented, and now they're essentially just using it as staging. So like, you know, you drive by there and there's no one working and there's just crap everywhere. It just kind of looks kind of ridiculous in a. Very central part of town.
I, I knew I should have brought him, Greg, because I had no idea, so.
I didn't, well, I mean, I don't think it's a discussion anyways, because I think even if we bring it up. I have a feeling they're not gonna do anything. It's more the staging. I mean, they just kept trash out everywhere, broken pallets. I mean. Pieces of equipment just there all hours of the night. It's just kind of looking, you know, pretty drab and, you know. I, I think that we've given them a pretty good leeway, wanting even allowing to do the, that project. Plus closing down the street for so long, they could at least make it look presentable when they leave it. I liked a lot of other projects.
I, I, Greg, I think we have a real legitimate discussion, because.
They said they were gonna use other properties.
When we got the construction project schedule, that shutting down the street was ever part of their schedule.
No, they just represented to us that they would have to do occasional shutdowns to, to bring stuff up to the, obviously, the top of the building. And then a, a longer, not necessarily a longer term one, but a, a little bit more permanent, when they had to do the work in the street for. Greenage or sewer or something.
Yeah.
And all the other, all the other staging.
The utilities.
Stuff like that. Yeah, and staging and stuff would be done on, they, I think they said they had rented other property on Foundry Street for that. Was really exactly what they said to us. And now, I, I mean, I guess I don't really care about the closing of the street, because fortunately for them. You can't get out the other side anyways, but I mean, it's kind of a hassle to, you know, one twenty-eight plumbing and stuff on that street. Plus it just looks ridiculous with all their just crap everywhere.
Now, who's the contractor?
It's them, Tom. They do their own. NRP.
I, I agree with that. It, it is really sloppy, a little bit disrespectful. Not a little bit disrespectful.
Yeah.
Well, I'll bring back the message. Okay, I mean, I was, I was thinking we could reach out to the police department or, you know, to find out what they, what they agreed to do. I mean, I've seen details down there occasionally, but.
I mean, at the very least, though, like the street being closed is one thing. It's just the, using the street as their personal dumpsters is a different matter.
Right. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind following up with the applicant, representatives. I don't know, I, I'd be curious what, what they've, you know, told the town. Well, maybe, maybe the best thing, you know, maybe the best thing I could do is I could tell them when they come back for the sign, they need to be prepared to talk about that.
So interestingly enough, if you go on, forget where I found it, there is a town kind of Albion, Albion Street. Harvard Mills project site, and it does say, you know, will be closed down longer term for, you know, five or six months, beginning or whatever. So they, they did clearly work with. My son is screaming.
No, there was, I mean, there was an extensive, there were a lot of meetings on this with Jack Roberto before he left on how this was gonna be staged. Um, so, uh, you know, and, and that was through the building department, because they talked about staging it like for pedestrian access. Like they did with Magicuri's building with the construction, you know, kind of platforms that you can walk underneath and they're lit. You know, kind of platforms that you can walk underneath and they're lit. And at the time, Jack said, no way, too much heavy construction. I'm not going to allow people to be walking through there. I want it off. I want it shut, I want it shut off. Now, it wasn't discussed how long that would be. But, you know, but that was kind of, that's why you're seeing that posting. So there were, the town administrator was at those meetings that I was at, the school superintendent was there, or I should take that back. I think it was the principal from the middle school because they were concerned about pedestrian traffic that way. There was the police chief, the fire chief, director of DPW, Tom Walsh was there.
So everybody, everybody but the ZBA.
Everybody was there. I mean.
Except for the ZBA.
Well.
Who had been representing something.
My, my recollection on the project was that on how the staging was going to happen there, it was going to be left to the building department and into those departments to figure that out. I, I don't, I think.
I would agree. I would agree with you that that's how it was left.
That's how it was left. So that's how they're doing it based on that. There was.
I don't think that gives them a right to use it as a dumpster, though.
I, I, I don't disagree with you on that. I mean, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I guess just next time too. I think one of the reasons we probably did leave it completely up to that too, is because they specifically represented they would do it on rented, they were going to use a staging on rented property. Which allayed a lot of our concerns.
So it would, it would be good to get an update, at least. Maybe an outlook of how long the street may still be closed. And, and, and the cleaning up of the site.
Well, I'm going to tell them, I mean, we're going to be at the next meeting. I'm going to just tell them to be prepared to talk about it. I mean, because instead of me coming back with a message, I think it's better that Mark is before you talk, you know, and that way he can answer your questions. Does that make sense, guys?
It does. And hopefully clean up in between that too.
Yeah, I can, I can give that message, Greg, right away. I'll talk to them about that tomorrow and then tell them I just want to talk about schedule.
Because who knows, we may not be favorable of what they're asking for based on how we're feeling about the project.
It may take us a longer time to look at the plantings. Who knows?
Yeah.
All right. I have one other issue, Mr. Chairman, from the building inspector.
Okay.
And Gail. So we're, and I, and I talked to Mr. McVane about this at the building department. We're having, we're having some issues with the smaller projects with like the houses where you guys cite plans in your decisions, which you need to, you know, it has to be built in accordance with the architectural plan, the site plan. And what happens with the larger projects, you always put the provision that Jim goes down and reviews the building permit plans to make their, make sure they're consistent. But with the residential, smaller type projects, you know, that condition's not there because otherwise Jim would need to have a permanent desk at the, at the building department to review everything that comes in. Doesn't he have one? And Gail and Ben don't have the time to look at all of these plans, you know, they, to be the kind of like the, the school teacher for the people following, following plans. So we were talking about how to deal with it and, and I was, you know, talking with, with Ben and came up with the idea that on the smaller projects, the architect and engineer should sign an affidavit to submit with Ben that they have reviewed the Board of Appeals, the plans that are part of the condition of the zoning decision. And they certify that their building permit plans are in compliance with those plans.
I guess the only question to that, though, would be then how do they get caught? Like if they Yeah, an affidavit is one thing, but if there's no way to catch inconsistencies, you know, anyone could sign an affidavit and have it filed away for 25 years.
You're not going to, you're not going to do that with a, with a license on the line.
That's what I mean. They, they get a professional stamp on there. I don't. I, I feel that, you know, what else we're going to do, by the way? And how you catch them is, it's a complaint driven business, right? You know?
I think, I think the homeowner is going to have a big problem if somebody, you know, doesn't do it right because it would make them subject to tell them to take it down or redo it, make it right. And then they're going to go back to their architect and say, you know, why did you sign the plan?
Price is different. And then it comes back and that, that person's license is at stake because they signed an affidavit saying that.
Understood. I think it's going to save a lot because, you know, and Jim, you know this, a lot of times, you know, you know, not to pick, not to pick on architects, but you know, they might look at a plan and say, oh, if I move this window or those stairs, it's not really that big a deal, you know, what's the big deal? Well, not, you know, no, now you're going to sign it and you're going to say that it is consistent with it, 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 it.
It complies with, not substantially.
It complies.
I know.
Yeah, especially because Brian just said that they might want to move something.
What's the word, Greg?
Greg, there is no, well, there is no word. You just don't put substantially. It, it, it meets, yeah, I know what you mean, though. It matches. There you go.
Yeah, it matches the plans that were, you know, I'm going to work on a form with Ben and Gail.
Okay.
Then I do that, but he wanted me to, Benny wanted me to run it by the board and make sure that you were okay with that.
Gail, can you represent what Mr. McGrath is telling us is truth and fact?
Oh, yes, it is. Believe me. Believe me, what's happening is these people, they come in a couple of years after you guys approve something. And we go, we pull the file out and you know how you go through, you say the plans dated this by this person, they never match, never.
The dates never match.
They never match, never. So, you know, all these big rolls of plans come in and there's like 50,000 of them with all these permits. And Ben can't go through and look and see, is the window not here? Is it, is it moved?
And if, if the project's been delayed, it might even be a different person. I mean, just look at 2737. We, we did something with Peter, basically approved it. And then what did, what did our buddy go up and do? Basically, he went on down to Melrose, got a one-person shop that hardly knew what he was doing. And then my life, then my wife, my life has been spoiled for three years.
So is this recommendation for all projects to do this?
It's up to you. I mean.
Okay, well.
Could, could we leave it up to the building inspector, like on a certain project, he says here, I'm not going to, you've signed this affidavit?
Well, usually.
Unless, unless we give the.
I mean, I think in the bigger projects, it's good for Jim to look at the plans because you're talking about serious, you know, money.
But that's when there's a condition anyways, right?
Yeah, you have a condition.
Unless there's a condition, it's up to him.
Yeah, unless there's a condition that says that the board needs to review and provide a building permit, then they would have to have an affidavit signed.
Okay.
I think we just have to make sure too, we put in who, you know, if they're not following the, if it's not done, what's, you know, is there a fine? If there are no CFO, what's the, you know?
No building permit.
No building permit issue.
Okay, so maybe that's then, do we have to put that in there or is that?
And he just wouldn't give it to him.
Mr. Chair, are you working on your rules still? Are you still working on revised rules?
In my spare time.
Well, that's, that's something you might want to put in the rules. Right, that, you know, in the rules. I mean, I think it's a good practice. It gets the architect's attention. Because as, as Jim says, he's going to think twice before he signs. He's going to look at the plans real careful.
Well, it's architect, engineer, or developer. Basically, it's probably one of those anyway.
And it's, it's to confirm the building plans match the approved plans in the, in the decision.
Correct.
So it's kind of like a, it's kind of like when an architect signs an affidavit that the, that the building's been built by the specified. Right?
It conforms, bill, definitely, the normal of those are that basically it signs off that your design, your documentation meets the state code.
Right.
Building code.
So I guess, Brian, one thing to think about too, if you, you said you're doing a draft to be, because I think it was a Dave that said it's either the engineer, the developer, or the architect, is if a person has a set of plans, that person should sign. So it could be, you know, multiple people signing, right? If, because you're not going to ask an architect to say, does this meet the site?
No, I, I agree with you, Greg. Yeah, so you know, that's, so the site, site survey would have to sign the, the site plan.
So, yeah.
I always liked an affidavit at the end of, near the end of the project because I can tell the owner I'm not signing until I get my last bill paid.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing that up.
You can see no permit.
All right. I made a note, something to add to the rules. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Gail. Any other board comments, clerk, report?
I just have a, Gail, where can I see the beginning of this meeting?
I think it's posted two days after. Okay, on. Yeah, I think it's on YouTube and WCAT.
Okay.
Or just go to the town website and go to our, our portion of Board of Appeals and recorded meetings there.
Perfect, okay.
There's a link from our page, yeah.
There's a bunch of ways, yeah.
Okay.
Remind the rest of you, we can watch her basically at her first meeting too.
I did good, I think.
Yeah, you missed two hours of fun with the top, but it'll be good for you to review that one.
Yeah.
Okay, there's nothing else? We have some minutes from April 14 that might need to be approved.
I move that we approve the minutes from April 14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Well done. Anything else, board members? If not, a motion to adjourn is always in order, especially at 11:05.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on favor, Greg. You made it.
Yes.
Jim?
Hi.
Amy?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes, I voted twice on that.
And.
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for their patience tonight. Got through a lot of ground. And have a good night.